I appreciate that. I'm still getting out all these, are you still getting stamps? I mean, it's only been two years. Maybe they'll update it in the next person would get organized every four years.
It's, no. I, if I'd like it, a Santa Shaper Meyer email or a Kate Briggs email, I don't even look at it. I just delete it.
Yeah. They can't update the records in like four years.
Yeah, or fourteen. Wendy, are you ready for us? I should warn you all that I got up at like the equivalent of two o'clock this morning. And I just spent five minutes looking for my glasses that were hanging from my collar. So if I break into incoherence, that's my excuse. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November eighteenth work session of the city council. Our first item of business is a report on an action item related to the city app. Ken?
Thanks. I wasn't sure that I would be the one reporting on the city app. I am one of the, I have one of your team's least technologically savvy people, though I use apps every day. And I think this project is, is a great one. It won't be done tonight. It's part of your strategic plan as well. So I wanted to make sure it stayed on the agenda as we put our action items together and reporting back to the council. But, but there are some important things that we can go over here for just a moment on the city app. The first is that we have been looking at companies that could assist us in preparing an app. There may be other ways to get an app done, but what we've done so far is put together some cost estimates. And depending on who we hire, and we'll talk about one specific company in a moment, the prices range from about $7,000 to maybe $20,000 on the high end. And these will be annual costs, maybe a little more upfront, but there will be some ongoing costs to maintain it. There'll be some staffing costs to keep it up to date, depending on the content. The other thing I wanted to show you a little bit, and this, and this is where it's not really an exhaustive presentation, but I took the chance to kind of, I've looked at a few apps and so has John, who's been on this project. These were examples, and these are screenshots off of my cellphone, which is the preferred device for an app, I think, is what we're after, the convenience of a cellphone. This is not from Farmington, Utah. It's Farmington in a different state. But these were, so this screenshot on the right is kind of one of the main ones that pops up in the app. And then you can go to the upper right and, and look at other things that I didn't do a screenshot of. I thought the interesting one was the submit a request, and so they actually had so many that it took two screenshots. And so this was an example of a city that appears to me to maybe have gone through, through their own experience trying to determine what the public cares about or what they maybe routinely see or experience when they're out in the city. And so, pretty good options. We don't, we don't operate our own animal control service, but I could see us actually having animal control pieces to our app if that's something we wish to do. And we could partner with other agencies if there's other things that we want to do. So that was, that was one. This one is very similar, and I think, I think that Civic Plus did both of these. I am looking for feedback and I'll kind of try to frame the feedback a little bit. I mean, if you have feedback now, that's great too. But yeah, I'll be asking some questions. This one, I wanted to kind of show examples. This is from Riverton, Utah, by the way, which has a fairly good-looking app if you, and I downloaded these and started kind of looking around and using them on my phone. But I thought the one on the right was interesting and it's, it's, that you can see in the middle, which is kind of the main page, it's, it's down towards the bottom, it says, "I want to." And so you open it, and you click on that, then you open up the "I want to" piece, and you can see, "I want to apply for a job, apply for utilities, get a dog license, get a trash can." I get the sense in these two examples that they replicate the website, but in a much more efficient and quick and convenient way, which I thought was an interesting part of this project. I, I had previously been thinking, we'll do an app for a singular purpose, or maybe four or five things. But it appears to me that if we wanted to make more city services available in a more convenient, quicker way, we may be able to accomplish the half a dozen things that some of you have mentioned, and, and I'll turn some time over to you on this, plus we could do some of these things, which might be even more convenient for the public. I even thought, in the case of Riverton, they have a register to vote place. You could go click on that, and I'm assuming it'd take you to Salt Lake County's site where you can register to vote. But very interesting, and I, I think, I think these are the kinds of things that we might want to consider. I also think, one observation I would make in looking at both of these and then looking at several others, is that it's really sort of an attempt to get the public to engage more in their surroundings. So if you look at a lot of these, there's code violations, there's potholes, you can report a pothole, you can report a missing dog or a stray dog, you can report a streetlight that's out. And I think there's some real utility to that that makes sense to me. And so today, we don't really have a convenient way for the public to let us know that unless they go to the website, which, which is becoming more and more inconvenient for people to, to use. So I do think this is the way we ought to go. And so the third part of my presentation today really isn't a presentation, but it, and I alerted two of you who were interested in this particularly, who are, who have mentioned the city app numerous times. I asked you, what do you think the content of our, of our, or the purpose of our app would be? And I'll let you two talk as part of this discussion, but, so I think there's really two things tonight that would help us to move forward, and that is, if you like the direction of, the feel of these two apps, I think giving us feedback on that would be really helpful, because I think we can craft an app with, maybe with Civic Plus's help, who did these two, to put together something similar for our city. And of course, we'll work with you on that as well. In addition, what are some things that are really important to you as the six members of the governing body in an app? And what would you like to see that you may not, that we may not have talked about as openly? We've talked about, not to steal your, Councilmember Jackson, your idea, but we've talked about having an app that, that could inform residents about train delays, which is an important piece of what happens in our city. So of course, we want to not forget to do that. But there may be other things, and as, as everybody gets more mobile, I really, I was really surprised and happy to see some of the real utility of these, of these apps. So, anyway, I will turn the time over to you, and if you could give us some direction, we can keep going on this project and put some things together for you.
Ken, I just have a quick question. Sometimes in my work, you know, like someone will call me and say, hey, there's a water leak on the fourteenth floor, and I hurry and shoot a text to my engineer. And then it's like, what if he's busy and doesn't, you know? So that's my question. Report a problem. Let's say it's Friday night at eight o'clock and you report a problem. Is someone going to see that Monday morning?
Yeah. That's a great question, and our report of concern is, I would say, successful in many situations, and there have been times when it's been less successful. So I think we should address emergencies versus other things, and, and I think we could craft something that would instruct the public that if they drive by a street and there's water coming up out of the street, we would, on the app, they would be informed that they should call a number. They can call our on-call number, they can call the non-emergency dispatch, they could even call 911 on that. But, but I think we would need to put some thought into what sorts of instructions would we leave for the public so that we don't miss an emergency? Because I, I do think, I do think if the public relies too heavily on this and reports an emergency in a form that doesn't really get to us for a while, or could not get to us for a while, that's a problem. So that is something to consider.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I think maybe the mayor hid them all.
If you want a short meeting, just don't give me a mic. Yeah, just my comment, which you already alluded to, Ken, was my intent, when I was thinking about it, was solely for a railroad, a commute aid. I think anyone who's gotten and gotten stuck behind the trains knows that it would be really, really helpful to have fair warning and, and choose an alternate route. Thanks, Wendy. So I love that. I don't know, I, I think you reported a couple of months ago that Salt Lake used an AI, something that predicted routes, because UTA doesn't give out their schedules. But if we could look into something like that, I think we would probably make a lot of people really happy by not being stuck behind the trains on a regular basis. I'm a bad person to weigh in on this, other than that, because I have this weird aversion to downloading apps on my phone. I already feel like I have a million, and I, that bothers me. When I have to scroll six times to get to the screen with the app that, anyway. So I, I probably just wouldn't be a great person to talk about utilization, but I do think along with report a problem, we would want to make sure that it's in someone's job description for community. So there's conversation, if there's, if we have a, like a Facebook or a chat community, probably Linda, our HR communications director, someone would need to monitor that so that people feel heard, but that's my only other thought.
So, so maybe a follow-up question from me on the idea. Would you suggest that the app should be able to direct the public to, if we create a blog location or a chat location or something, a feature like that that we don't have? Or would you say it's just more of a link to Facebook and social media?
Well, I think that would be a, like a decision to be made, but if we had a community section that was somehow interactive, someone would have to have the job, in their job description that they're monitoring that. So like the report a problem, it doesn't go unheard.
Yeah.
Or, that's not a bad idea, just linking to the North Salt Lake Facebook page or something like that. I had one other question. Have you reached out to any cities to see how utilized this is? Like their number of app downloads in their city, or how utilized they feel like an app is?
I haven't, and I don't know, John, if you've done anything like that.
I, I did inquire, and I haven't gotten any response back from them. And it's Syracuse.
Other than looking in like the app marketplaces to see the amount of downloads, that's all I've done, and some of the ones I looked at were like 100 plus or 1,000, so.
I think, I think part of the answer, well, no, I haven't done that, but I think that I would like to speak to someone like, say, in Riverton City and say, and just, just give me your opinion about the effectiveness of the app. What sorts of feedback have you gotten from the public? It would be great if it were utilized, you know, by the public, that it was an effective tool that people would want to use. Part of me thinks that any improvement, and I know this is a low bar, but any improvement in the way that the city and the residents communicate is good, is good. Now, having said that, I think we should set our sights and set goals that are, that are ambitious and aggressive on it, so.
Well, and I also think there should be a bit of a cost benefit analysis. If it's an ongoing 10-plus thousand dollar expense, then we'd want to make sure that success equals utilization. If, we don't want to spend that kind of money for 100 residents to use the app. So that would be my other thought.
Mayor? Okay, shall I jump in? A few quick reactions. One, I really like this idea, and I appreciate Councilmember Van Langaveld and others for suggesting it. I would, it's implied, but I just want to be explicit that I think we should be able to send information to app holders. They could, maybe they have the ability to turn on and off the, the receipt of announcements. It could be an event, it could be, hey, it's second Saturday, free garbage. It could be, you know, a newsletter link, not sure, but an ability to send information that may not be sort of service oriented. That's point one. Point two, I don't favor a standalone chat capability. I think it is prone to getting orphaned or like being a dead end. But I do like the idea that perhaps there's a link or some way that it sends people to an already maintained social media space. Those are my two big points.
So I do have one response to, to your first point. Every app I looked at had a, it had a notification, a voluntary way to sign up for notifications. So I think that's an important piece of what we do.
Thank you for bringing this. I'm really excited about this. I think it's a, a great option, and I think it will get, I hope it gets a lot of use. I anticipate that it will, but I don't know for sure. I texted this to you earlier, but I would like to say in the meeting, what were my priorities to have as part of the app? And it, it really is covered with what you've presented here, but my first thing was just city information, and this is coming from the website, which you can kind of see here, like the kinds of information that residents can get on the city website, they can also get through the app, when that would also include being able to pay their bills, get information about a permit. And that, those links within the app, I think, should direct people to the website so that they can just click exactly, like, I need to apply for a permit in front of my house, or I need to. Another thing that I think would be helpful in that, either in the "I want to" or like an FAQ, I know that part of our job and part of the city staff is educating the public about kind of levels of service and locations of service, that if there is an electrical problem, that isn't really the city, but here's who you can talk to about that. So in the FAQs, it can have like, oh, if it's electrical, here's where you need to go, or if it's animals, then actually here's where that county information is. So it's redirecting residents so they can find those problems, or solutions to those problems, instead of just, well, it's not us, which I think the website does a great job of, so we can also do that in the app. I also think a calendar, and I can see that there's a calendar link here, and I said specifically with event notifications that pop up on their phone, I love that recommendation from Ted as well, and I can see that on my notifications here. One thing that I like about the city website is that there is an option to opt into several different types of notifications, but as far as I can tell, those are all email notifications. Is that correct?
They're text.
They're text as well?
They're text and email.
Great. I love that. So that, you know, mirroring that here, that they can get a notification pop-up, or they can, and they can opt into whichever ones of those they want to, like if it is a construction project that's outside of their house right now, or it's the legacy changes, that they're going to get those notifications as they're relevant. So bringing that into the app. And then the ability to ask a question, and I also agree with what Ted said about having in-app community dialogue, I would not recommend that either. I think the ask a question would send an email to a city staff who could then answer that question, and then redirect, if it is, you know, wanting to be heard in a more communal space, maybe redirect to social media locations, but that we're, we're not housing a town hall in the app. I do not, I would not recommend doing that. So text alerts, and then the last one was extensive FAQs, similar to what's on the website content. And then, let me make sure that I just said everything that I had written down. With regard to the train, if, if there is not a way that we can identify, I like the idea of kind of the AI modeling to see when trains might be there. Another way we could potentially manage that is through a link, like Waze or some other traffic app, so that in our app, they can link to, like, do you want to see the current traffic conditions at the railroad to know? Because if it's backed up, well, they won't be able, those traffic apps do not show that it's a rail, a rail crossing or a train that's backing it up. They will show backed up space, so we could link to that, or even like a current traffic camera, so that there's always the chance to like, look at what the railroad is doing at that moment. Yep, that covered all of my points. Thank you. I'm excited about this project. Thank you for bringing it up.
Eric, can I? I, I like this too, and I think that one thing that would be very helpful is the education. If we, you know how like, if you buy something from Apple, you can go to the Apple Store and they help you with how to work an app? That would be something that when we have different events and things, we have somebody from the city being there to help people. I think that would be very helpful, to have someone there to help with how to run the app. Frequently ask questions, or somebody that's really good at how to manage the app.
So, sorry, so that's part of our, when we have a city tent at the Kite Festival, for example, we'd have someone there that could help people with that?
Yeah, I think that, that's always helpful to have, to answer questions and things, but that would be something that could be, that could also increase traffic, and people would want to use the app if they had somebody showing what to do.
You could have a QR code on the city mascot, for example, right?
Who is the city mascot? That could be you.
We need a city mascot.
I have a couple of suggestions. With regard to community, are we done? Okay. With regard to community, what did we anticipate would be in there? Because I'm thinking would be a good idea to maybe have UTA schedules and 911 contact information and South Davis Metro, things like people have on their refrigerator often when they're older. I think that would be helpful. I also oppose the idea of having a social media piece to this app. I think it's rife with problems, will be, and a social media policy is typically controlled by people who contract in a way to say, I won't do X, Y, and Z to be a part of this, whereas we're not going to have that kind of a gatekeeping, I think, with this app.
I have one more piece that I want to add. I would love a section that says something about, I want to get involved, and it would include information on like our committees in the city and how and when to apply for those, and then also a link to Just Serve with specific, you know, volunteer opportunities within the city.
Love that.
Just making notes here. Well, thank you. This, this has been super helpful to us as well.
The other thing is, if we're going to do that, the one kind act a day and a bolder way forward, those could be on there as well, if we have cities that are linked to those organizations.
Yep. Great. Thank you. We will, we'll go to work on this, and I do think, I, I think that Civic Plus, who does our website, is a natural place for us to look. It's on the more expensive side, but I will look into that and see if, if we could do, if we could get it a little cheaper. But this is the type of product that we would get from Civic Plus, and I think it would, it would really complement the website and the city's ability to communicate with residents.
I, I know you're wrapping, but, so are we looking at snapshots from one, two, or three different apps here?
So this is, these are all from Riverton City, and these were all from Farmington, New Mexico. Yep. So just two, just two apps. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Ken. Our next item is Arts Committee Report. Sherri Pace.
Okay, thank you. The Arts Committee asked me to make this presentation tonight. We have one member of our Arts Committee here, soon to be a city council member, so we're going to need another appointment to the Arts Committee, Councilmember Jackson, because she's your appointment. Okay, so we went over this last night, the Arts Committee met, and they, we went over this, spread this slide slideshow, and they gave me their input. These are all things that we've been working on this first year, and they were excited to get this information to you sooner rather than later, so. The 2025 Arts Committee goals that they've set were, the first one was to launch the mural program, then to address public art, and then programs and events, and submit a budget estimate and request to the city council so that as you move into your budget year, you can adequately plan for some of the things that they see as priorities and want to recommend. So I'm going to start with the mural program, and I want to just take a second to introduce you to Jean Montanaro, who's right here. This is our wonderful mural artist who painted her father's work on our very first mural, and we're super excited. So I just wanted to give you where we started, or where she started, on this building to where we are today. And this is-
Can we just really quickly give her a hand?
Yes. We have received so much positive feedback, and Jean reported to us that she had many, many residents and people stop during this process and tell her how wonderful this was and how much joy it brought to them. Sorry, I'm getting choked up. I'm just really excited about this. Anyway, I'm going to try to hold it together. So this is really cool mural, and the Arts Committee is just really happy to have this project completed, and it's almost done, so. It's substantially completed. They still, we still need to have the Davis, Discover Davis logo added, because we did get the grant approval, so. And then the last thing to do is to add the anti-graffiti surfactant. The paint has to cure a little bit before they put that on so that it, it adheres properly, so that will be done in the near future. Again, we did get the Discover Davis logo. We are going to have a mural event, a dedication, and we're going to do that on December 1st in conjunction with our Winter Light Fest, so at 6:00 PM. And I, I drew this little map of where we're going to meet. We're going to push the, move the fences back in so that we have some of that grass area to stand- move the fences back in, so that we have some of that grass area to stand on, we'll have lighting. We would like to have the mayor make a few remarks, and then have Jean or her mother Sheila there to present and say a few things about that. We are working on a plaque to put on the site, and then a webpage with a story map and some links to the other pages that their family has put together for their dad's work, so we're super excited about that. And then that will be followed by Winter Fest Light, or the Winter Lights Fest, that'll start at 6:30, so. We just thought that would be a really great opportunity, where we have a whole bunch of people coming for a wonderful event, that we could celebrate this mural, because the timing worked out really well. So, just to give you a breakdown, you allocated in your budget $10,000. The cost of the mural total with all the materials and everything is about $8,800. We were awarded a $4,250 grant from Discover Davis, so that remains in the, in the budget, there's a remaining $5,450. So, we're super excited. One of the other things that I wanted to tell you about, that's come about from this awesome new mural that we have, is we have been contacted by a gentleman who lives in Park City, but had an interaction with Jean at their silly market, and where they sell, they were selling some prints of her dad's work. And he got really excited about it, they came down and saw the progress, and then asked that they get, that I get in touch with them. So I reached out to him, and he would like to donate $5,000 to next year's mural program. So, that's kind of how this snowball is going to start rolling, so we are super excited about that. As part of that, we want to do it right. I think the Arts Committee wants to do it right, and make sure that we have the mechanism to receive the donations, and so the right entity is to set up a 501(c)(3). And so I'm looking into that, we'll be bringing that to you for your approval in the near future, in the new year. But before we receive that donation, I just want to make sure that we have everything set up in the right way from the very beginning. So the Arts Committee would like to do two additional murals next year. And they're, why they want to focus on the town center. They want to do this other painting of Jean's father's. And we have a, we have a building that we have targeted, and we're, we're, I'm going to invite the owners of that building to the dedication of these murals, so I think that would be awesome for them to see how how much the community is rallying around it. Again, we're working on the website and the story map, and then we'll continue to make grant applications next year. As far as the public art program, this is what the committee has been working on. So we have been working with the landscape architect for Hatch Park to locate places in the park for public art, so that as it is constructed, we make sure we put the conduits in the right place for lighting, and that if we need pads that are engineered or have rebar in them, so that they support heavier sculptures, that those have been planned for, so these are the recommended sites that they've discussed and that he suggested for us for art locations. In addition to that, they have discussed other locations that they would like to see public art, obviously this is not all in one year. These are just identification of sites, and as we find pieces of art, then we will match them with a site that's appropriate. So they've thought about the, the town center and City Hall, the Veterans Memorial Plaza, our city entrance monuments, we had some discussions on that, I've got another slide on that. The Eagle Ridge Roundabout and the Foxborough Drive Roundabout seem like really fun places at entry points to our communities, that that would be super fun to have some art. Tori Beck, who is our newest member of the Arts Committee, suggested a sculpture for the golf course. She has one in her gallery right now that is of a golfer taking a swing, and she's like, she saw that, she's like, oh my gosh, wouldn't that be great if we had something like that up at the golf course? So that, that's the most recent place we've thought about. So, the other things that we have been doing as a committee is advising on the Hatch Parks, to the Hatch Park Steering Committee, on the tower and the pavilion that have the graphics, and so they've given their feedback to the Steering Committee on what those graphics look like and, and their opinions of them. And then, we've talked as a committee about city beautification, and they're super excited about the tree planting programs, and just want to offer their support for that, and any assistance that they can give in the future on that. So, as part of the public art project, public art, they are identifying certain public art projects that might work, as you know, we've talked about the big chair idea. And this is a graphic representation of what the chair that is being proposed for Hatch Park. Along with that, they had some other ideas, and one idea was to make the big chairs but small chairs. So in the kids' playground area, put a little tea party table and chairs that would be really cute in these, these styles that kids could sit and play at, and so that was one. They had some ideas for the use of the trees that were removed, as we talked about that. And maybe we could make some sort of city tokens that could be handed out to people that said something about it being from the Hatch Park trees, and, and celebrating the new, you know, something we could hand out when we do the grand opening of the park. They also talked about the artist that is working on the, that has the trees. Now, the, the big ones that he's going to make things out of, that he could make like, a bench or a swing that could be put in the pavilion or in the living room area from some of the, some of the wood from those trees. And, and another idea was that we could create a little free library for the park out of the trees. And maybe it could be something themed with the Bamberger Railroad, or something along those lines. Of course, then other public art that they've looked at is sculptures, and we've talked about utility box wraps. We have a lot of those not-so-pretty green boxes around the city, I'm sure you've seen them in other cities where they've wrapped them. And they really like that idea, that we could take some historic photos of North Salt Lake and have the boxes wrapped, or we could have them wrapped with art. We could have them wrapped with art that the elementary school kids did on the boxes that are near elementary schools, so that they could see those. Those wraps last about three to five years. And so, we've, we've been doing research on that. As we looked at how do we get sculptures, we started doing some research on that, we, we've spoken to Bountiful, we also reached out to St. George. St. George runs this program, it's called Art Around the Corner. So every spring, they host an event where, and you can see this was last year's calendar, they had 38 pieces of art. And during the first week when they opened this up, people come and visit all of these different sites to pick art for either purchase or lease. So the art is, all, the artists' prices are, they vary from less expensive to very, very expensive. But the lease, you can lease a piece of art for 10% of the cost. So if the cost of the art was, let's say it's a $30,000 piece, the lease would be $3,000 a year. If at the end of your lease period, whether it's one, two, or three years, you could decide to purchase that, if the city wanted to, and those three years worth of lease payments would go towards the total cost. So you would be out nothing, so if we brought a piece of art in, and we leased it, and it really got a lot of good feedback from the citizens, and they loved it, then, you know, you would have the option to decide if you wanted to purchase it for a permanent placement. I think that Bountiful is seeing some of that in, you might know about the dragon that they have over there, that's been very popular, and that's, I, I, that's my idea, is if you had one, that a lot of people would, would like it, and they would be, we can't let that go now that we have it, because it's so cool. Did I see a question? Okay. Oh, so with that, we would need to provide some budget for at least a couple of members of the Arts Committee and staff to go to St. George in the spring to view the art. So, they talked about branding and wayfinding, we showed them our branding and wayfinding plan, and they were really excited to think about how they can help improve the image of North Salt Lake, from the entry monuments to when we get bus rapid transit, when that finally goes in, we will be consulted by UTA on the artwork and the stylings that go into the stops. They have a program for cities to choose artists to display art at those bus stops, so we are really excited to see that happen. As far as program and events go, here are some of the programs and events that the, the committee is either in charge of, or that they would like to propose. So, right now, NSL Reads is under, under the Arts Committee. In 2026, they, the fantasy theme was already chosen before we heard about the America 250. So we had some discussion about how could we incorporate America 250 into NSL Reads. And with a little bit of research, our, our subcommittee from NSL Reads found out that they, the state has a list of books relating to constitutional and our history, and that are for all ages, so in the list, there's for little kids, junior high school kids, elementary school, and adults. And so they thought it would be fun to do a reading challenge, and unveil that at the NSL Reads event, and if you, they wanted to give out like, we're not really sure yet, but some sort of a passport or something, where if you read the books, then you would get a stamp, and then come to Liberty Fest, and you can turn in your completed passport, and you would get like, a bookmark, America 250 bookmark, and be entered to win a prize, a raffle for a prize, and get some donations for those prizes, and so that's an idea that they're working on, and they'll coordinate that with the Events Committee also. Other Events Committee that they will be coordinating on next year will be the photo contest. That traditionally was a P.T.A.R. event. And right now, it stayed in, in the purview under the Events Committee, but because it's photographic arts, there's, there's some crossover there, and so we want to collaborate with them on that, next year's contest, and help them out in any way we can. And then also tie that into the America 250 events, if possible. They have some ideas that they would like to be able to have some art exhibits, and host maybe local artists, here at City Hall, we could put up displays in the, in the lobby, or in the council room. And, or have some student displays. So they, they really would like to look into the, the possibility of doing that. They had some really good ideas about performance art, particularly community concerts. And they ask a question that I am now going to ask the council. They would like to inquire about the availability of the Eaglewood Event Center. Right now, if anybody wanted to rent it to have, let's say, a recital, it's cost prohibitive. But if there is a night once a month that is, you know, not used, if we could, as a city, sponsor, or at least make the facility available at a much lower cost, a discounted rate, and, you know, at the bare minimum, whatever it costs us to have the staff to clean up and set up the chairs, or, that they would like to have that as a community benefit. So maybe it's like, the first Monday of the month or something, I don't know which day. But something along those lines, and so if that's something that the council would support, we would love your help on that. And then they have been talking to people who are interested in doing like, plays at the Veterans Amphitheater out here. And so they're pursuing those ideas. And then they, they thought it would be really fun if we started having concerts in the park, and if we had our own stage that could be portable, you could have concerts at various parks, so it wouldn't just be on the east side, it wouldn't just be on the west side, or just in midtown. You could move those, that stage around, and during the summer month, you'd have one here, and one, another one here the next month, and another one, so that's an idea that they have. And most recent idea they brought up is that it would be really fun to have a storytelling festival. So, the big question for you is the budget. And what, what next year you would like to prioritize, and so we're not asking for everything that's on this list, I want to just make that very clear, but we want to give you an idea of what the cost of these things would be, and then as you go into budget, you can establish what the priorities are for each year. But these are the, the ideas that we have. So, they would like to do two murals a year, and would be requesting $10,000 again, now that we know how much, you know, what the grants and how to go about that business, we believe we can get that matched, and also get additional donations towards that cost, but $10,000 from the city's budget. They would like to see a budget of $20,000 a year for sculptures, for either purchase or lease. The utility boxes to wrap them is about $750, and they'd like to try and do about four a year. I, I don't think we have those, that wouldn't be ongoing for you know, many, many years, because we would run out of utility boxes. But that's kind of where they would like to start. The cost of that big chair is about $15,000, so thinking if you did big chairs in the different parks, it would be around that, that cost. One of the ideas that was put out was, we would have the, the big chair idea that we have here for this park, and this would not be for next year, because it's going, this wouldn't be done, I mean, the park won't be done, so this is not in this budget year, it would be in the following, and but that we could put calls out for artists to do other big chairs, because they would be different for the context of the park they were in. If you were up at Tunnel Springs, it might be a big chair with a kid sitting on it with a flying a kite. If it were out in Legacy, you know, it would be, it would look totally different, and it would, it would fit the context of the park, and we would do a call for artists on that. They want to request an annual maintenance of $2,500 budget, that would be budget that would be for the the Public Works Department, for any maintenance that needed to be done on public art, if it needed to be cleaned, or whatever the maintenance cost would be for it. And then, $2,500 for travel, which, which is why I kind of pointed out how much we had left in the mural budget, so if you wanted to allocate that for this spring, for the mural, or for the Arts Committee to go to the Art Around the the Art Event in, in St. George, that there's still money available that we saved from not spending all of the mural money. And then, NSL Reads, right now they're budgeted for $1,000. Their events are running a little bit more, because they like to get the author, they pay the author to come do the event here where they speak with the kids, but they also then go and visit three schools. And then have some other entertainment, like a magician the night of the, of the event, and so they're asking for that budget to be 2,000. And I'm not really sure about what the, there's a question mark there on the photo contest, because I don't know what the budget was, or how that's provided for the Events Committee. But they want to just make sure that that line item is in there. Some of the other one-time expenditures that they would like to recommend that you consider would be, that we would need equipment for art exhibits, so we would need display equipment if we were going to host art shows. And that would be a one-time expense, and you, we would reuse that same equipment to hang the, the art on the walls. The small table and chairs would be about $4,000, again, that would be a one-time expense, and the free, little free library, the construction cost would be about five on that. And those are just estimates, so, best ballpark that we go. We have an estimate, they want to encourage you to do city beautification projects, the city monuments, they were, we are estimating that those will be about $15,000 each. That's, again, just an estimate, I have Ally and our intern working on getting some estimates from sign companies on those particular features, and then they want to encourage you to continue the tree planting program that you have, so I just put that number in there, the $10,000 that you've been putting in. And then, at some point, they would like it to see a portable stage for those concert events, and I don't have a, an estimate on what that would be. But this is the things that they would like to recommend to you, and have you consider, again, not all of them need to be in the, the very first year. But they wanted to put those out there, so that you could tell them what you think the priorities should be that they focus on. Also, into that same effort, if there was a certain dollar amount that the city council was willing to put towards the arts, and we set up the 501(c)(3), that money helps us get donations from philanthropy, from philanthrists, and people who want to donate to that, and so that's really what the, the goal is, to say that we're a partner in that, and then to go seek donations to make up the difference of these items that they would like to see in public art. So, questions? And Heidi can address anything that I missed? Okay. Suddenly I turned around and the room was full. Yeah, we, they really are focused on fundraising, they really want to- They really want to work on that piece. They feel like there are a lot of people who are very generous in our community and outside our community that would be very supportive. I mean, just that, the one contact that's already been made that wanted to donate $5,000 to next year's mural programs, that was like, I was just floored. And he spent about an hour and 20 minutes on the phone with me. He'd recently, they have recently moved here. And they're big supporters of the arts. They live in Park City. And he was just super excited about this mural program and actually about David Montanaro's art. He thought it was awesome. And he explained to me some of the things that he's been involved with, with different fundraisers and philanthropical organizations, and gave us some pointers on what we need to do to set them up. And he said he would be a resource for us to contact anytime and help us however he can. And so, there are a lot of generous people out there. And the committee really wants to be able to leverage the money that the City Council is willing to put into the public arts and get more donations.
David or Ken, we spend a lot of money renting a stage for Liberty Fest. I don't know how much, but we could put that towards a purchase of a stage, certainly, and then use it for Liberty Fest as well as other events. The other one, I, seems like we donate every year to the Bountiful Arts thing. Maybe we should donate to our own Arts Committee instead of Bountiful's? Oh, yeah, sorry, Heidi. All right. I just retracted that.
Remember, the Bountiful Davis Arts Center is not just Bountiful.
Yeah, I know, but it's Bountiful.
It's a South Davis community organization.
Share, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Lisa.
The Arts Committee is on fire. This is fabulous. I'm so excited about all the new ideas and the creative coming together. It's so wonderful to see. One thing I know that they do in Logan, and Logan's a college town. So, Logan has a poet laureate that they announce every year. And the poet will begin the season, the beginning of season in January, write a poem, read a poem. And I've kind of, the literary arts sometimes get neglected, which is an area. So, that might be something that you could recommend down the road. I mean, you've got NSL Reads, but that's something that might be interesting as well. And then, our city, if we're going to do with the railroad theme, as we are, maybe we could have, this is kind of foolish maybe, but we could have a conductor, a city, we pick the city's conductor. And people can sign up for that. And anyway, it would be kind of interesting that we could maybe generate that theme with regard to the Bamberger. We haven't much. We, I mean, we could have somebody walk around on fire with petroleum coming out of their clothing, but we don't want that. But a conductor might be something interesting.
A trolley conductor would be awesome.
Thanks so much for all this creative energy.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with the Arts Committee. I've thoroughly enjoyed it and I look forward to another great year next year.
Sherri, you've done such a good job. And Heidi and Jean also. I'm not going to put you on the spot, Jean, but I'm just saying, there's going to be an opening in the Arts Committee. And I already feel like you're on the Arts Committee. And so, just saying, it's out there. Thank you so much. Lisa's right, the Arts Committee is on fire and it's been so fun to be a part of that. And I did get from the Bountiful Mayor-elect a compliment on Heidi last night. She said that Heidi has done a really good job on the fundraising side for BDAC. And so, we're happy to include her on the North Salt Lake art side as well. I love the idea of opening up for the possibility of recitals. I think anyone who's been a piano teacher or been a piano student, along with guitar and violin, it can be really hard to find a spot for recitals. And that, I feel, is a contribution that the city can make to the community that enhances the community as we build and develop artists within our community. So, I really like that idea of trying to find recital times. There's a lot of other, we could go on and on. You already know how I feel about all of it because I'm in the meetings and part of it. But I just want to thank you because you guys have done such a great job. Of course, I love the 501(c) idea. We want to do it right and we want to be able to do it so that it's tax deductible for donors, et cetera. So, thank you so much, all three of you.
And all of the, and all of the Arts Committee. They are all just fabulous and they all have different talents and interests and that they share their knowledge with us on how to do some of these things. It's an amazing group of people. I'm just, I'm thrilled to work with them.
I want to echo that as well. It's so exciting to see this whole program come together and all of the forward energy and action. And I would say, for our purposes, I think this is what you can see when we start really fine tuning what the assignments are that we're giving committees. The Pitar Committee had arts within their purview for over a decade. But because they also were carrying responsibilities for so many other pieces, it never was able to get the energy and attention that this now has allowed it to do. And look what has happened, how fantastic. I'm so excited about it. I don't know if you want feedback specifically about those budget recommendations now or if that's probably something we will follow up on later. But I would like to make, just say one thing with regards to recitals. I love the idea of creating a space for recitals within the city. However, I don't think the golf course is the right place for that because it is a loss of revenue for the city. But I think we should open up City Hall for that. And then, we are also able to do that way more than just one night a month. We could potentially do it 10 nights a month if we want.
The benefit that the Eaglewood Golf Course Center has is that it has a baby grand piano. And we don't have that here for the use, if piano is involved in it. So, that was why that was specifically thought that gee, if there was one night a month that historically didn't get rented and maybe that's a specific Monday or something. Because we wouldn't want to take up the space on a weekend or on a day where we would be having tournaments. But if there is some time that Tyler could find that is not used and is not utilized and we wouldn't be taking away revenue.
Could we say we only offer daytimes for recitals? Because I think if we only do one time a month, we're talking about potentially 12 people a year.
Well, 12 recitals that could have, you know, they could have 10 or...
Yeah, 12 events per year, which to me starts to feel more elitist than community focused as like 12 people get this. And that feels like, well, you better be one of those lucky 12 or you don't get the option. So, that's just a piece to consider.
The daytime would conflict more with golf tournaments, especially in the...
During the week, too.
Yeah. Where the evening, you know, Tuesday evening, Wednesday evening, not so much.
I would actually say if it's not being rented, I would like it open more than once a month so that it doesn't become only 12 people a year get to do this.
We would love to open up that dialogue.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Let's take a quick break and reconvene quickly.
Thank you.
Wendy, you ready? Okay, let's get started here. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular session of our city council meeting for November 18th, 2025. Welcome. Good to see a good crowd here. Our first item, we'll turn over to Tammy Clayton for a thought and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I love a good story. And so today, when I was at work, my boss told this story that happened November 5th in Hawaii. And so I'm going to share it with you because I just think a story that has a good meaning and a message is something worth sharing. So I actually had something else, and when I heard this today, I thought, oh, this is what I'm going to share in city council today. So I'm going to also give you some homework. So today, when you go home, Google Hawaii Shark Attack Survivor on Honolulu Bay. And it's a less than three-minute video, and then you can watch it yourself, but it's just a really good little video to watch. But Chance Swanson, who I did not even know until about 4:30 this afternoon, he was attacked by what they believe was a tiger shark. As he was off, he's a lifeguard, and he was just deciding to go out and ride the waves. And he did two that were just fine, and then on the third one, he felt something chomp down on his leg, he said. And he didn't, he knew he was in trouble. And he said, in his words, "Next thing you know, something's just chomping down on my leg. It was so much force, I couldn't see it. I couldn't see where it was coming from, but I just knew it was a shark. I lifted my leg up, and I was like, oh, no." He said, "I said my prayers, I believe in God, and he saved me." Then he tried to tie a tourniquet, but he struggled with that. But the way he signaled, his lifeguard's friends came to help him, and they tied a tourniquet, and they took him to the hospital. And but it did hit a pretty good artery, and he lost a lot of blood. But he was very weak. And if you listen to the story, his life was saved, but it was his attitude that made all the difference. And they said, "He's young, he has a positive attitude, and he will recover and be fine." But what he said that I thought was worth sharing was the difference in how he views this incident. He says, "I'm looking forward to getting back to normal life, riding and surfing, and I think the Queen's staff, which is the medical center that he went to, will help me get there." He said, noting that, "He's learned from the experience. It was like a mental block almost to tell my friends that I love them, and now it's super easy to tell them." And so this week, there's 10 days until Thanksgiving, and I thought, this is the week and the time that we all are very, we think so much about being grateful and the things that we're thankful for. And so that was just a good reminder of things can change in an instant. And as I sit here and I work with so many good people on the city, I didn't realize how much that the city staff and people do for the people in the city. I drive the city so differently than I ever did two years ago. Just in the last meeting, when Sherri was talking about the mural, I was one of those people that drove by the mural, and I would yell out to them and tell them what a good job it was. That's a beautiful mural. I can't wait to have more. And I'm so proud to live in a city that wanted to do something like that, because that is such a neat thing. So attitude is everything, and what a difference it makes. And it made a difference to this chance who had a terrible situation, but I'm sure he's going to have hard days ahead, but he's going to make the best of it. And that's what I just want that we can do and have a better attitude. And if you think about it, go home and watch that video today. Honestly, I think it will change the way that you look at things. And with that, if you'll just stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
Thank you, Councilmember Clayton. Next item is a presentation of the NSL Photo Contest Awards for 2025. Dallas, can you come forward on this?
Okay, so we had our, I guess it's fourth or fifth annual photo contest. I feel like I'm missing half our crowd here. And this year, our theme, we went away from having themes, but this year, we decided we'd have a theme, and it was to the semi-quincentennial of our nation, so that these will be hanging in our city hall for the next year. It's great to see these canvases. When I picked them up, I didn't look at them because they were wrapped up nicely, and I didn't want to. But it's very satisfying to see a photo in physical form. There's something very satisfying in that. But so for our first place, are we going to take pictures with you as well? Okay, all together, okay. First place, let me pull out my notes. For the adults. For the adults. So first place for adults is John Edwards. And his is the, sorry, his is the fireworks. There you go. And then second place adult is Cliff Bradford. And his is the Fragmity or Wheat or whatever it is, Against the Sunset. Oh, let me give you a card here. I'll get that to you in a second. And then third place, if I remember correctly, is Jordan Solomon. And then first place youth is Madison Golden. Oh, sorry. And Jordan has the mountains. Madison has the Vietnam veteran. And then second place youth is Anna Lynn. She has the Stock of Wheat Against the Sunset. And then third place is Molly Bunel. Bunel. Okay. And she's not here, apparently. And she is the electric, the lightning against the electric pole. And so be sure on your way out to check out the ones out in the hallway. That'll be the last time you'll be able to see those before those are given to the winners of last year, and these will be hanging in the city for the rest of the year. And while I'm plugging events. Oh, yeah, that'd be great. While I'm plugging events, get on your calendar. We have the Winter Lights Festival coming up on December 1st, and the kite festival on May 2nd at Tunnel Springs. And while I'm up here, I'll keep talking. We'll plug for next year. It's never too early to start getting out and taking pictures. We probably won't have a theme next year because it's so much easier for everybody to get a picture in that is unthemed, as long as it's taken in North Salt Lake. Thank you.
All right. Next item is citizen comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, please come forward, state your name and address.
John Marsh, 3879 South, 775 West, Bountiful. Just two quick comments, because there's a lot. I just wanted to thank Lisa for her service, and thank everyone that ran. I think that it's challenging having run and being the last person to have lost to Becky Edwards. And I know how difficult it is both to lose. And so, yeah, just wanted to have a positive attitude about everybody that participated in the election, and would also encourage the council to make us both in North Salt Lake and of North Salt Lake by readdressing the annexed area, and whether or not we could get a county grant to assist with some of the funds. Since we transferred over from the county, I feel like it would be appropriate that we finally took action along those lines. Thank you.
You'll probably throw me out after tonight. About a week and a half ago, my wife was reading a Facebook presentation posting of a lot of residents who are very upset about what's happened to Hatch Park. And the mayor, or not the mayor, but Ken, our city leader, responded very well from the city. But I've heard about 15 or 20 different people who have said that they have been lied to, that they are very upset with what's happened. Why was our park torn down? What was wrong with it? What are they going to do with it? And we were told that they weren't going to take down the trees. There are no trees left in Phase 1, except I was told there's three of them, but I'm not sure where they are. And everybody is very upset that that has now been graded, leveled, and sitting as a desert, if they want to call it that. And so I think that, and I've said this before, I think that the city needs to do a whole lot better presentation of what they're doing. The picture of what the park's supposed to look like that's out on the street does not look like anything that's left in the park, so I'm not sure what that picture represents. People have said, when the park was first proposed four, five, six years ago, whatever it was, number one is there was never a vote by the public on the bond, which was for $17,000 or for $17 million that was supposed to cover the entire park replacement. Anyway, that's the way it was presented. Now it's $20 million for Phase 1. What's Phase 2 going to cost? There's a little rumor out there that I've heard from different people that probably the city's going to have to raise taxes to pay for some things. And I will guarantee you there'll be bloodbath if that happens, because people are very upset about what they have heard and what they have gleaned out of what has been said. The next thing that I've heard a lot about is that we are putting in what they call a tower and a living room. Everybody that I've talked to and has said anything, it says, "What is the purpose of this tower? Is it so that people can drive by on the freeway and say, oh, there's North Salt Lake? Are people going to be able to go up in it and look around and see anything?" The answer to that, as far as I know, is no. It'll be just a tall monument for no purpose at all. The other one I've heard, and this has to do with something that's happening in Salt Lake City, Salt Lake County right now, if the homeless elder goes in, the living room will be a perfect gathering place for those who wander down this way and want to sleep on the comfortable benches and things. I think that from what I have heard, that it would be very well for the city council to look back at both the living room and the monument and say, "Do we really want them? Are we willing to spend over $1 million for something the public really doesn't want?" And I think that we need to do a little bit more on, this is what the park's going to look like, a little bit better than the picture that doesn't really show it. I know that I know that there's been a lot of people very upset with what has happened and the amount of money that's being spent on that part of it. And we hear that we're going to make North Salt Lake the gathering place of southern part of Davis County. North Salt Lake has never been a gathering place, it's never been a place that people go to, and I don't think that you're ever going to be able to make that. Now, that's my opinion. Maybe it'll happen. I've been here 50 years, and we tried to make it across the street. Now that's all apartment buildings. We thought, well, maybe we've got some nice parks out there. And I think that's great. I think that the parks that we have are super, and everybody really goes to them. But I don't see a big event center in Hatch Park. And a lot of people I've talked to have said the same thing. So that's, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just bringing what I've heard, and you all know that I have big ears, and I'm not afraid to pass it along to you so you know what's going on. But I think that we need to do a much better job of informing the public, and maybe the app on the telephone will be able to do some of that, but I sort of doubt it, because most of the people don't really care. My wife responded, you know, Ken responded to the post out there on Facebook, and somebody said, well, Dee, is that you doing it? My wife replied and said, no, I don't do that. And she also said, if you want to have a complaint or say something about it, come to the city council, and the next city council, November 18th. And I don't see anybody here that's willing to stand up, because they're not part of that on there. And all those who are complaining, that's all they did. So hopefully, this makes a difference in some of the things that we do in the future, and hopefully will appease some people. Thank you.
Next is council report. Let's start with Tammy.
Okay, I have, I have a few things, actually. So I feel like we haven't met for a long time, and Halloween was forever ago, but I have, my report is from the Spooktacular, which I feel was very well done, and appreciate those that came, those that helped, especially the city council that helped help volunteer, I guess, voluntold, maybe. Thank you so much for helping with that. But I do want to do a shout out to the Public Works people. They do so much and help us. We couldn't do what we do without them. And, you know, they have a, we used to pay for a DJ, and they came with a music list and did that, and that saved us money. And I just really want them to know how much I appreciate them so much. So thank you, John and your crew. Please let them know that the events appreciate you, because that's a lot of work to do what we do. So that happened. Then also, the lunch bunch, they recognized the veterans and had a really nice thing on the 12th of November, and I was not able to come because of work. But Lisa, thank you for being willing to postpone the bolder way forward and let them just do that that day for...
Not a problem at all. I'm glad that we were able to honor the veterans on that day. It was so close to the actual holiday, so...
It was.
I appreciate you doing it.
Well, I heard it was very well attended, and it looked good, and everybody that attended, from what I heard, it was very well done, so thank you for that. And then the next thing that's...
Wait, Dee tells me there were 80 people, 82 people. That's the biggest crowd they've ever had.
We should have probably had Dee report on that for citizen comment. Oh, come, yeah. Oh, you are? You're going to say something? Okay, thank you. And then the next thing that will be coming up is the Winter Lights on December 1st that we will do, and there will be something that Suzette will probably report on that as well for the mural. But then Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there, and we'll have, we're going to do scones. That will, right, John? Yeah, we're going to do, it's going to be awesome. Pray for snow, because that will make it a Hallmark event.
What day again is that?
December 1st. It will be Monday, December 1st. I have it in my calendar. Just a personal thing for me. And I think that's all that I have, but there was, there's a lot that's going on, I feel like, but I just wanted to, for sure, let the Public Works people know how much I appreciate them, all of us on the events committee does.
Thanks. Lisa?
Okay, so for updated information, there was a press conference held today in the North Point area near the homeless, proposed homeless campus, and I know several people in our city went to that press conference, just to keep you updated. And then there will be a meeting of the Utah Homeless Shelter Board tomorrow. The city staff knows about that, but it's at 2:00 PM tomorrow, if any other city council members are interested in attending, and they will be talking about the campus there at that board meeting. I wanted to provide updated information about the school bus route that I had talked about previously on Recreation Way. The bus has started picking up within the circle, and it's, I checked with the school today, and they said it's going fantastic, and the students that are there, who were not coming to school for months in advance of that, have been to school every single day since the bus started picking up in front. So it is, the solution is in place and working. I want to speak about the voter turnout in the last election. Voter turnout across the city is very different, meaning that it's much higher on the east side in particular, and lower in the midtown and the west side. I think, as a city, I would be interested in putting effort into increasing voter outreach. What I could see that looking like is just posting updates and sharing information, similar to what is already there, but maybe a little bit more targeted. And I don't know if that could go on an action item to work out, or if that should be added to an agenda item to discuss at a future date. I would also like to put on the agenda discussion, an updated discussion on Hatch Park design. In particular, we can talk about revisiting the tower if necessary, and maybe if it's too late to do that, that could be part of the agenda item. And then the graphic art sign that is next to the pavilion, I remember us talking about this, and in my memory, currently it says Hatch Park. It's slated to say Hatch Park. I am more interested in it saying North Salt Lake than Hatch Park. I think that creates a more clear sense of place, but that is a conversation we should have together, and so I'd like to recommend that that is added as an agenda item. And that is it.
Thank you. Lisa?
Congratulations to those who won and to those who ran. It's, I love America. It's wonderful that we have free and open elections. I just wanted to report that on the fall cleanup, on the three days when you can take all your stuff down there and have it taken care of, I really appreciate it. And when I was on the council back in, when we started this so many years ago, we didn't do it on Sunday. It was just Saturday, Friday and Saturday, but not Sunday. And I'm one of those that went on Sunday, and they were saying it was busy even on Sunday. But it's very nice of the city to do it, and it's fun to see the men that are working, who have such great attitudes, driving the backhoes, and it's just great. And it's really a unique thing that we're doing in our city, so thanks so much.
Suzette?
Well, I was planning on, I feel like this has been a busy last couple of weeks, but I was planning on talking about how great the veterans event for the senior lunch bunch was. I feel like Conrad did a really good job of really personalizing and helping everyone understand just what it means to be a veteran. We had a lot of veterans in the group, and a lot of wives of veterans in the group, and it was just a beautiful evening. But Dee, I would like to invite you to come up if you'd like to, and just give your thoughts on it briefly. Dee brings the fun, just so you know. He brings the fun to the senior lunch bunch, because he runs the bingo and the prizes afterwards every time. But Conrad brings some good fun, too.
I thought Dee put the fun and dysfunctional.
Conrad gives jokes at the beginning, Dee does the prizes at the end. It's all over a good event. Go ahead, Dee.
I was quite surprised at how many were there. I don't remember, Wendy, how many plaques did you put out of names on there?
We had 16, ours.
There are 16 of them.
Eight, ours, we had 30.
Okay. But there were 16 of them that they made name tags and put on different tables to mix them out there, and I think we had about 12 or 14 that came. There were two or three that did not show up. But it was very emotional for a lot of them, and when you consider how many years ago it was, and how old you had to be to be a veteran of that, it was really quite nice to see older people, older than me, there to participate. And normally, we set up about, well, we set up eight tables, and we have eight per table, so we have a capability of 64 sit-down places. And we always have two or three volunteers that are also in the kitchen that we don't count chairs for, but we had 81. Instead of having eight chairs per table, we set up nine tables. We had to set up another one after people started arriving, and we had nine chairs at each table, which made 81, and there are four empty chairs. Plus, we had three helpers in the kitchen, which made about 80 people, which was really, you know, your money was well spent. And I think I talked to a lot of people afterwards or during the time, and all of them were very pleased with what Wendy did and what Conrad did, I guess. Catherine? Okay. Yeah, I don't know some of them as well as others, but they did a very super job. You can be well pleased that the program went very well, and I think that they've talked about having it next year. There's only one problem, next year, Wednesday happens to be the same day as Veterans Day, and so what we'll have to do is maybe bribe somebody to open up the room here so that we can have it here or something to, so that, because people are used to having it the second Wednesday, and as you well know, people that are my age or older, sometimes they don't like to get out of their routine, and so it would be best if we could do that. But thank you very much for, you know, backing it and sponsoring it, and we always thank Wendy. I don't think she gets enough praise for what she does to take care of all of it and make sure it's all coordinated, so thank you.
Thanks, Dee, and I agree, I will second that. Wendy is amazing. I could tell her every day and still not get that across enough. And of note, I brought my father, my parents, he's 80, and he's a veteran, and he just loved it. Also asked if he could maybe just be, they could be annexed into North Salt Lake. They're in Bountiful, right on the border, so I told him, sure. I think I could arrange it. And then there was also a county event that night on veterans, the 11th, and it was really well done. We heard from a general and a marine, and it was just a really nice event. So it's, I just love seeing when civic and patriotic events and also our veterans are given the honor and the credit that they so rightly deserve. The arts committee, as we heard from Sherri, has been bustling, and it's just so fun to watch the progress. Just an amazing committee. I went to the Greenway meeting, and I know Ted is actively involved in this as well, but it's a really exciting project, creating a corridor from North Salt Lake all the way through, you know, Bountiful, Centerville, Farmington, Kaysville. And for our side, it's going to be the Orchard Drive all the way through past Bolton, Belton Elementary.
Second West.
Into Second West, right? We're Orchard, and then we go to Second West, yes, yes. Also, we have some Greenway Committee members here, and so feel free to add anything, too, if you would like. But it's just going to be, I think success was defined in the previous meeting really well as timely, which, I am not a patient person, so government strains my patience. Timely is great. Used, well-used. I think that is the goal, not just to look aesthetically pretty, but that it will be well-used and family-friendly, so that all ages will feel comfortable and safe and use it on a regular basis. I'm really excited about this project, and I think it's going to be a real boon to the society of all of south and a little bit of north, Davis County, right? Kaysville north, yeah. Farmington, Kaysville. Central Davis. Do we have a central Davis County? And then another set of meetings. The South Davis Rec Center, of course, always meets on the second Monday, but we also had our Truth in Taxation yesterday. I'm going to report on that next time, but just of note, because it affects everyone, there was a small tax increase that did pass. It passed at 6 to 1. I was the one, but it was a very cordial, and we'd already had robust debates. There were several that were on the fence and last minute kind of went the other direction. I held the one. I still hold out hopes that we can fix and resolve the budget with the low-hanging fruit that the last couple of years of really hard work has now shown and produced. So I think we can, I think we can fix the budget to the extent that it needs to be fixed right now without putting that burden on the taxpayers. I was outvoted, but it will be a small increase, and I am still going to continue. I've poured more over that budget than any budget ours, and it's a juggernaut, but I think I've got some headway going, so we're still working on not passing on further taxes. I think Davis County has been a little inundated with truth in taxations this year going around. So I think that was the multitude of meetings in the last two weeks that I've gone to, but it's been a productive and really fun couple of weeks, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Suzette. Ted?
Okay, Mayor, it's great to be with all of you tonight. I've missed some meetings lately, work conflicts or vacation, and so anyway, it's great to be with you. One, only one thing on my list, you may have on your calendar that this upcoming Monday is a Wasatch Choice Vision Workshop. And that, as you may know, is the name for the formal collaborative planning document that includes a statement of the aspirations from each community for land development, dovetailed with the region's formal regional transportation plan. That's really the gist of it. And this meeting will focus on transportation. It'll focus on what is the collection of transportation projects draft to meet transportation needs, road, transit, trail, for the next 30 years. I'm bringing it up, look, it's my day job, that's one, but I actually think it's a very, unique is an overused word, but it's, I think it's a unique opportunity in this way. It's a chance for us to meet and interact with our peers from adjacent communities. This is council, mayor, planning commission, key staff, county commissioners, some state legislators, key staff from U.T.A. And so it's a, it's a very rare networking opportunity. I actually think that's the main reason to go to this one. So I did want to put in a plug for it, but not in the way that you might have expected. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Will you send that?
And I do want to note, Councilwoman-elect, you're invited, and I will get you the invite. And commission members as well, so of course, so.
And you'll send that out again as a reminder?
I will, yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, I think that our planning commission members have been invited, if I'm not mistaken. Thanks.
Todd, do you have anything for us tonight?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a couple items. I received compliments on the cleanup, what a great job they did, as usual. I've got maybe not much of a surprise, but we had a really bad year on the mosquito side of things. but we had a really bad year on the mosquito side of things. We had forty-eight West Nile cases in Utah, which is the second highest ever. And a lot of that's weather-related. If, if it rains at the right time, gonna have a lot of mosquitoes. And most of the surrounding states had, also had increases over the ten-year period. We average about one or two deaths a year. We had four this year. So it was, it was just a bad year. And then also, I just wanted to say, as I got on a plane in Atlanta today, there were several people coming to Salt Lake for this National Cities and Towns Convention. And so it was kind of fun to talk to them. Anyway, I know we're all busy, but anytime we can break away during the day and go to these, we should do that. I don't know how often it comes to Salt Lake, but I suspect it's once in our, yeah, once in a lifetime kind of thing. All right. City manager report.
Thanks, Mayor. The only thing I had is really just on the National League of Cities Conference coming up in the next few days. I, I emailed you a link to the conference agenda. I, as I get ready for the National League of Cities Conference, I'm more appreciative of how the league puts their agendas together because it's so easy. And this one was complicated and hard to get around. If you use your credentials and got it on your phone, it's kind of difficult to use. So I just thought, I'll just send you guys the link. I copied the link to the agenda. You don't have to sign in. You can just follow the link. You can use your phone to follow the link, just going to your email. So hopefully, that's helpful. Wednesday, there are lots of sessions, but they're, they're classes that you pay for in advance. So Wednesday, we didn't sign anybody up for Wednesday. I didn't even look ahead. So the conference really starts Thursday. And so Thursday and Fri, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we have an ability to go to those conference sessions that are open to folks who have registered. There's lots of interesting topics. Thursday at 1:30 is, 1:30 to 3:00 is the general, opening general session. And so there'll be thousands of people there, not hundreds, that we're used to. We're used to congregating in the back of the room and finding a table. I don't know if we'll be able to do that for this opening session, but, but I'm planning on going. And if you go, we can text each other and maybe find each other in the room. But that's all I had, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the, for the city council acting as the North Salt Lake Board of Municipal Canvassers, the acceptance of the City of North Salt Lake 2025 Municipal General Election Results. And I'll turn this over to Wendy.
Not that I wanted the camera on me, but I'm not sure if I got it adjusted right. That'll be gucky. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think that you all saw this lovely packet as you came in tonight. These are materials that were not provided in the packet in advance because Davis County has up until 5:00 PM last night to get all of the ballots cured and counted. So that is why you got it today emailed to you. And I just wanted to review some of the highlights. So I'll get to this canvas, what you've all been waiting for. And, and I think Elisa alluded to it, which I thought was great. North Salt Lake voter turnout seemed really much higher than it has been. I believe we were under thirty percent in the past, but I could be wrong. Thought we were like twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So much higher voter turnout. Registered voters for North Salt Lake are eleven thousand fourteen. And the ballots cast total was three thousand seven hundred and seventeen. And then that was a thirty-three point seven five percent voter turnout. In the canvas report document that looked like this bright red page, into it, it kind of shows how those ballots were cast by type, the ones that used the ballots by mail. We had six provisional votes cast and a hundred and seventeen votes cast here in person. And then it just kind of went through all the process for how the election process works with testing all of the equipment at the beginning, things like that. But what you're all dying to know for the public is, drumroll, please. We have our unofficial results that were on our website. And I made my cute little arrows. And they're not nearly as fun as what Sherri would have done. But the unofficial versus the official. So there was a slight change, but there's not much change after Election Day when those votes all come in. But it gives people time to take care of those ballots. So we have gaining the top votes for Mayor Brian J. Horrocks at two thousand seven hundred and twelve. And the top two vote-getters for the city council were Elisa Van Langfeld with two thousand two hundred and seventy-two votes and Heidi Smoot with one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six votes. And I just, too, want to commend all of those that ran for the election and worked so hard. And you can see, there really was quite a close race, I thought, when, when they came in. But you guys have all worked so hard, and, and so I appreciate that. And these will be, so basically, our two incumbents that were running were re-elected. And Heidi Smoot, who's also here in our audience, as well as many of the other candidates or their spouses representing them tonight. So a couple of other highlights from this quite lengthy report. I'll just show you the 2025 general election not-counted ballots. And so there were fifty-nine in total. And as we saw in the primary election, because this is still kind of new for people to not understand that if their ballots are postmarked by that date. So there were forty-nine that were not timely. And so they just didn't quite make it in time. And then it also shows some of the other things. One that didn't prove identity, that maybe had voted provisionally and extended a time. They were all given letters and told how to do that. But, and then signatures that didn't match. So maybe a parent signing for their college student or something like that, that shouldn't be happening. And then also, you were given this really large-scale county-wide statement of votes cast, and it shows the precinct data. So I just crunched it down and included in your report, and it will go in our packet that will be posted later, just the condensed North Salt Lake numbers so that you can see it by precinct and how that works. And I'm sure that's where you gathered a lot of your information from today.
Yes, you can look at that third column over that says voter turnout. You can see that the voter turnout across different areas in the city is widely disparate.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So this is just that precinct, those precinct numbers that were in that big, long spreadsheet. And then there was, there were other things that were in there. For instance, it just had the ballot reconciliation, canvas statistics. Both of those were countywide numbers. And so was this statement of votes cast. And then a new reporting that the county was, and elections are required to do based on House Bill 1004 is the votes cast record. I, this was not included in what I provided you, but that spreadsheet was, every ballot has a number. And I was able to use Heidi, our, our Heidi Vordeckers wonderful spreadsheet operations, and confirm that this record is accurate. If you see, the top line is the title line. And line in the spreadsheet on the far left, line three thousand seven hundred and eighteen, which would be one higher because of that title line, is the amount of ballots cast. And could confirm for me that we are getting the right results. We are, I can feel comfortable certifying this record. And then also, one other thing is I attended the post-audit election this year, and that's the first time I've ever gone to that, and witnessed firsthand how they just really work hard. The county's awesome at making sure that every vote is counted and that all the numbers match. And they do it a myriad of different ways to just verify and make sure that it works. So I think you can feel confident in certifying these results. And just wanted to know if you have any questions.
I had one, Wendy. Am I on the Board of Canvassers or not?
You are, and you are needed to vote. It's all of the elected officials, the governing body for the city, that is the Board of Canvassers.
What does undervote mean?
Undervote means that somebody did not cast a vote on their ballot. So if, if it says undervote for the mayor, they maybe just voted for a city council position. And, and one of those, you know, reports, if I'm gonna find it, maybe, that it counted, there was probably over five hundred not voted. So people just picked one city council member to vote for, not the other. I think that would be on my back screen, right there at the bottom. You can see in pink on the right, there were five hundred and ninety-five not voted city council. They didn't vote for two. They just voted for one. And in the mayor's race, there were a hundred and thirty-nine that didn't vote for either candidate, just voted the city council race. So that's what that means. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'll accept the motion, Mayor.
I'll make a motion. I move that the council accept the City of North Salt Lake 2025 Municipal General Election Results as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's do roll call. Ted?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of Resolution 2025-57R, a resolution approving an agreement with A.J. Green for the use of ass, 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 sorry. I'm ready for bed. For Lot 310, Eaglewood Cove.
Okay, so this is Lot 310 in Eaglewood Cove Phase 13. And I have that, this parcel, the two parcels actually, Lot 1310 and Lot 1310 HP. Remember, those are the hillside parcels. But this is just particularly covering Lot 1310. So as you can see, we have an easement that goes through this lot that accesses our city water tanks. When we approved the plat, there was a note put on the plat that said that our access could not be used for a home to be built on Lot 1310. We did that intentionally when we put that on there because we didn't know who was going to build the home, how well they would be willing to coordinate with us on sharing this, this access. And, and it left us in a better negotiating place in the future if we wanted, if they wanted to do it. So we were approached by A.J. Green. He has purchased this lot and would like to use part of our access for his drive. The reason that this is a good idea for him is that if you look on this map, you can kind of see this red area. And when you look back, where you see a lot of the vegetation there on that lot, that's, that's kind of a little hollow. And so they would have to do significant fill work on that portion of the property in order to build a driveway that's on the north, north of our access. And because of that, then they actually would have, to keep the driveway at a certain slope as required by the fire department, they would have to lower the home and excavate it another four feet down. And so when they looked at it engineering-wise, they're like, if we could use just a portion of this driveway, then when we come across, we can come across the top gra, the slope, and we won't have to set the houses high, as low. So we, we can raise the house four feet. And we also don't have to do significant filling on that. So as they approached us on that, we entered into negotiations on that. We have on the access road right now a gate. And part of the agreement that they are proposing and that we've negotiated with them for is that our gate would be replaced and moved about fifty feet up the access. And it would be replaced with an automatic gate that's mechanical that would lift vertically instead of horizontally so that if there was snow in the area, it wouldn't ever get blocked by snow when you're trying to open the gate. So they will open this way instead of that way. And I don't know how they'll put that in the minutes, that movement that I just showed there. So they will purchase the new gate. It can be to an aesthetic that matches whatever fencing that they want to use. But those are the, the specs that we have, is that it opens up and can be controlled by us. The other part of the agreement is that as part of snow removal for their own driveway, they'll remove the snow on the first portion of this lot, of the, of the access, where they're going to use concrete instead of the asphalt. And then, of course, maintenance for that portion of the, of the driveway, if there's any repair that is needed, they would need to, they would be responsible for that. We will be responsible for the portion of our access where it turns into asphalt. We are not concerned about being able to get our equipment up there to the water tank because this road will have to be built as a fire apparatus road. As you can see, it has, as I outlined it here, it has a hammerhead turnaround. That's a requirement of the fire department because they're further than a hundred and fifty feet. So they have to have a turnaround. And it also has to be built strong enough to hold a fire truck, which is seventy-five thousand pounds. And so that will certainly cover any equipment that we might have to go across it with to go up to the tanks if we needed to replace a pump or, or some other piece of equipment that's at that location. And so the DRC is recommending approval of this. We think this is a, a better use. We get the gate that works for us. We get the maintenance agreement. They get a better access. There's less fill and cuts and fills on this property. And so that is, the recommendation is to enter into this access agreement. This has been reviewed by our city attorney. He did catch one mistake in, on Page Three, Subsection J. It referred to another county that was not Davis County. And so we're, that, one small change from the one that's in your packet to say Davis County instead of Denton County. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion. I move that the city council approve Resolution 2025-57R, authorizing an agreement with A.J. Green for the use of an access easement on Lot 1310 of Eaglewood Cove subdivision Phase 13, located at fifteen twenty-five East Wood Oaks Loop. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let's do roll call with Tammy.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Consideration of Ordinance 2025-18, an ordinance rezoning 1.106 acres of Lot 1 and eleven hundred north Kraus, Kraus Crossing subdivision. Sherri?
Okay, a few years ago, we had an application before us for a two-lot subdivision and a rezone, if you remember that. Half of it was zone CG and half of it was zoned MD. And the MD lot was directly south of the Sky Park Airport. The Lot 1 was sold to Come and Go, who was going to put a gas station on that. And the development, developer was going to try and find a user for Lot 2. They worked through that several times, couldn't find somebody who was interested in that. In the meantime, Come and Go came in and went through their site plan approval, got that all approved, and then they were purchased just by Maverick. Once Maverick took ownership of Lot 1, they were not interested in putting a gas station on this property. And so it has been put back out for sale. Now, on this Lot 1, we've had a proposal. We actually have a site plan application in for a McDonald's on this site. It is It is on hold at the request of the applicant. And I think it's because they're working out something with the lease or the franchise agreement that they have to do. But they didn't need the whole lot. They only need about an acre and a half instead of two and a half acres. And so it left this other one acre portion of it. The owners of Lot 2 were approached by Crete carriers who would like to purchase it and expand their operation into this area. Their operation happens to be one that the FAA will approve. The problem with developing on Lot 2 is there are height restrictions and use restrictions. So not only can you, are you limited to the height of the building to be built on that property, but you can't build something that draws a lot of customers or a lot of employees there. It has to have a very low daytime, you know, density on the property. You couldn't put a school there because there's a lot of kids there, and you don't want a plane crashing into a school or a building that has a lot of people in it. So they were also interested in purchasing that one acre along with all of Lot 2. They have submitted a, the owners of the property have submitted a lot line adjustment, which is administrative, handled by staff, as long as both of those two lots that remain are, meet the minimum requirements of the respective zones, which they do. So the one and a half acre lot in the CG zone, the minimum lot size in CG is one acre. The minimum lot size in the MD zone is two and a half acres, or is two acres, excuse me. And this lot will then become three and a half acres. And so what they are doing is just requesting a zone change so that the entire property that Crete will be purchasing will be in the MD zone. We did look at this very carefully and thought about what would happen if we didn't do the zone change. And our ordinance basically says that if you have a property that's divided by two zones, the more restrictive zoning would apply to the entire property. And because the MD zone requires a larger lot size and actually allows a shorter height limit, that would be considered the more restrictive zone. So in effect, it would already be treated as MD. This is basically just a cleanup to, to make the entire lot official on our zoning map as MD. So this went to the Planning Commission last week. This just shows you, this shows you the two lots beforehand and then the portion of the lot that is being joined into part, into Lot 2 for that. And the Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation on the rezone. Any questions on that?
Thank you for bringing this. I think this seems like a great use of the additional property. I know there are a lot of restrictions there. In the packet, you referenced that there has been conversation about an application for McDonald's on Parcel 1. However, that's not currently in the works. Am I, is that fair to say?
It actually is ready to go to this, the day it was supposed to go to the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant called and asked to have it held off the agenda until they work out this, either sell of the rest of the lot or the franchise agreement. They didn't really disclose what their issues were, but it's still on the table. The owner of the property, Wright Development, says they still have a purchase contract with them. So it should be moving forward after this happens.
So I think that's wonderful. I hope that that is exactly what happens in this property. My question, though, is if it doesn't, and we rezone this portion as manufacturing, are there other general commercial groups that could use this size of a property? Like, if it's not McDonald's, can it be something else?
Yes. It meets the minimum standard for the zone. In fact, it exceeds the minimum standard for the CG zone.
Great. Thank you.
The minimum lot size in CG is one acre and the parcel is one and a half acres.
Any further questions? Can we make a motion?
I'll do it. Thank you for your presentation, Sheri. It was very clear. I move that the city council approve Ordinance 2025-18, amending the City of North Salt Lake's zone map and rezone 1.106 acres of Lot 1 of the 1100 North Kraus Crossing subdivision at 1096 North Wedwood Road from general commercial CG to manufacturing distribution MD with no conditions.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let's start with Ted.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Next item is consideration of a bid award for Center Street's sidewalk project on the south side of Center Street between Orchard and 340 East. Karen? Oh, John? Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Okay. Consideration of bid award for consulting service for the Trails Master Plan.
That's what I was reading on the screen.
John?
All right, so.
This is my third mistake.
So back in the spring, the city was awarded a $37,500 grant from the Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation to do a Trails Master Plan. The city match was $12,500 for a total budget of $50,000 for this project. The scope for the project that was released in the RFP later this, you know, just in the fall, in September, was for the, to master plan the natural, the unpaved parts of the trail system up in the foothills, identify some of the trails that need to be sanctioned through the U.S. Forest Service property. There's like rerouting and enhancements, closings, and development of new trails and trailheads, and provide a maintenance plan with cost estimates is kind of what the, just what it was asking for. So that RFP went out September 30th through October 20th, and the city received back five proposals from Avid Trails, Blue Line Group, Bike Utah, SE Group, and Teton Geologic Service. We had a committee, a selection committee that I was a part of, Ally was. And then we had two members of the Trails Committee, Peter and Brent were on that. And we did a five-point weighted scale on these parts of the project. And this is kind of how they were weighted out. And after our initial meeting, we had kind of selected our top two, SE Group and Avid Trails, which Ally called references on both of these groups. And then the committee met again, and we discussed these. And we, the committee recommended overall SE Group, with the highlights that we were impressed with the quality of work. The team has two former U.S. Forest Service employees on staff, one of them which would be the, heading up this project. And also that they were going to partner with the Utah Conservation Corps for the on-ground work of doing all the surveying of all the trails that we have out. There's a lot of just user trails up in the foothills that have just, just probably need to be closed down. And we don't even know probably half the extent of what's up there. They had excellent references and the recent experience working with the Salt Lake City Foothills Trails Master Plan, so just right next door. When we met with them again, because there was some budget concerns, they were $60,000 for their proposed budget. Ally did receive some calls from a couple of other consultants saying, well, you guys are, your RFP is really asking for a lot for the budget that you have allotted. So we did know that, we just wanted to just confirm with them why their budget was a little bit higher. It reflected an honest approach to what they're doing. When we met with Molly Ryan, she's the project lead. These are just kind of some bullet points of a follow-up email that she'd sent, you know, that what we're going to get for our $60,000, a phased public informed Trails Master Plan. We're going to use the zonal planning approach to, you know, guide trail development without committing to specific alignments too early, and identify existing alignments. We want to focus with the NEPA stuff. There's, and then support efficient planning that protects the resources and, you know, improves the user experience. They had also included a $5,000 add-on for an enhanced Trails Master Plan. And we kind of wanted them to define more of what that is. And basically, it's to kind of make more shovel-ready projects and do some more of the initial planning to get some trails ready to go. And the committee felt that this was a good use of funds without having to hire a future consultant to do the same work and that we can get started right away with working on the trails. And it puts us in a great position to apply for grant money to, you know, get some of this work done. So with that, we took this back to our Trails Committee and shared all this. And they recommended approval and a selecting of SE Group and recommended increasing the project budget to 65,000 to cover the $10,000 increase and the $5,000 enhanced Trails Plan. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions?
Thank you for bringing this. I'm really excited to see this project move forward. It was my understanding, as we've talked about this previously, that the city's Trails Master Plan would also include the paved trails within the city. But it's clear in this that this is not. This is only for unpaved trails. Can you help me understand that, or what, where will we include planning for the paved trails?
I don't know if Ally has something that she's working with the paved trails. I just know that the grant was only for the unpaved trails. So I can't answer that question right now.
And that makes sense. That's actually a good answer. So this helped us access the grant that is helping pay for the services. But my question is, do we want to call this then the Trails Master Plan when it's including only unpaved trails? Or do we want to call this the unpaved Trails Master Plan? Or maybe that's typical, that the Trails Master Plan for a city only ever includes unpaved trails? I don't know the answer to that. And maybe paved trails in the city get adjusted or addressed somewhere else.
Sheri says she has an answer for that.
So the paved trails are covered under our Active Transportation Plan?
And I have a comment on the nomenclature. It's, there's no, there's no pure standard. I think historically, that word "trail" was always "soft trail." But increasingly, like UDOT, when they just released their Utah Trail Network, that is predominantly hardscape in-city trails. And it's, there's a little bit of like a communications question here for us. The term "trail" resonates so effectively with people. And so when we named the committee, we called it the Trails in Active Transportation, but we kind of, I think, were purposefully inclusive with the term "trail" that it was both, you know, hillside and in-town. So anyway, a couple of musings.
And I really like that. And I think that this is another example of giving a committee a more targeted focus can elicit a lot more action and forward momentum, which is fantastic. And we already have and works an Active Transportation Plan. So if the paved trails are included in there, I feel like it's addressing that need. I would like to just make one other comment. I think across the board, the city is budgeting and receiving really fantastic grants for consultant services to create plans. And I think it is worthwhile for the council to consider, if we're going to put all this money into consultation, are we ready to also put money into implementation of that? And if we're not, we maybe need to pull back from our consulting. And that's not what I'm recommending. I'm just saying, remember, at the end of this $65,000 report is going to be expensive plans. And where, just where, start sensing where do we feel like we are ready to say, this is what we want to invest in or prioritize? Or we've had a lot of conversation about not being interested in raising taxes. And I share that feeling. And so keeping that in mind of where we are within our city budget and what we can actually do without raising taxes.
I love that question. Do you mind if I do a little response? I think that, I agree with you. I think that us deciding to do a plan means that we are committing to implement. Now, we can choose how fast we implement, right? We can, we can have implementation occur based on a budget, you know? But I think we at least start immediately on the first project. And how fast we move on the rest of it is another question.
And can I add on to that, Ted? I went to some of these beginning meetings when I was on Pitar, before we went to the Trails Committee. And it was, I think, three cities? Was it three or four? Centerville, Bountiful, North Salt Lake, maybe Farmington. I can't remember. But I felt like Kate Bradshaw made a really good point. Bountiful is a lot further along in their trails development than we are. And they've been working really conscientiously, I think, for several years on that. We're kind of newbies in this, like we're at a, at a beginning stage. And her recommendation to all the cities that were starting the process that they were already fairly through, fairly developed in, was that the best thing we could do would be to get a really good comprehensive plan put together because the time that it's going to take, even from getting this plan to then getting the grants and getting the Forest Service to approve everything, I mean, is years sometimes. And so she recommended that cities do a really comprehensive, check all the boxes, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is plan. It has a much better chance of sailing through the first time. She said one of their hiccups was it kept getting kicked back. They needed more and more. And so they ended up having to hire consult, more consultants for other additions. I think the goal here is to take what we learned from Kate and do just what you did, which is get it as comprehensive as possible so that we don't have to go back and spend ultimately a net-net more. The other thing I really liked about this that I didn't know was the two members of the U.S. Forest Service. I think that's a huge boon. Whenever you have someone who's worked in the agency, they know what exactly they're looking for. I think they'll have a better chance of getting the correct information in the report right off the bat. So I also agree with Ted that this is, I think, a priority. But how fast, I mean, we're probably still talking years even from, even after we get this whole plan put together. So it'll be a trickle probably for a while.
Yeah. As I say, the timeline for this plan is probably, you're going to start in January, probably finish up in July.
And then, and then it's, what, go out for approval and grant?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. And I want to just clarify. My, pointing out this idea of this will come with now recommendations that will cost money is less so about resistance in spending the money and more so in that I think it would be such a missed opportunity for us to hire fantastic consultants and develop a comprehensive plan and then for it to not turn into anything. That we should be thinking about what and how we are going to show up to support that because we're already going to create a fantastic plan.
Any other questions, comments?
I move that the city council approve SE Group as the consultant for the Trails Master Plan project and direct staff to prepare a budget and amendment to include an addition of $15,000 for the project.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Let's start with Ted.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That passes. Next item is deja vu. Consideration of a bid award for Center Street Sidewalk Project. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. So the Center Street Sidewalk Project should be familiar to most of you. This is the connection for the sidewalk on the south side of Orchard, in between, I'm sorry, the south side of Center, in between Orchard Drive and 340 East. There is sidewalk on both ends, so it's just that connection. It's a little hard to see the sidewalk here, but the purpose of this photograph is to show how we're going to improve kind of the crossings and the circulation. So there's existing crosswalks that I've highlighted at Orchard Drive at the signal. And this is a crossing guard location for schoolchildren. The purpose of this project is to eliminate the need for children to cross the street on their way to school until they get to the signal light where the crossing guard is located. In addition, up on the eastern end at 350 East, the crosswalk there, we've already installed the RFPs. That way, if you're going east and going across the street to the park, there's some additional safety there. And we will be removing the two crosswalks at 200 East and 250 East and replacing them with a mid-block crossing that tends to be safer. And that aligns with the church that's across the street if folks in this neighborhood are wanting to go up or down the north side or potentially attend services at that church. wanting to go up or down the north side or potentially attend services at that church. This project has been designed, a little interestingly, I'd like to kind of point out some fun things we've done. The biggest one is we're trying to do kind of a design-build modification to help eliminate impacts to existing landscaping to the residents. So for example, in the top left-hand corner, you can see that we're maintaining the sidewalk adjacent to the street until we hit that first property line. And the photo directly next to it is the reason why. We don't want to impact those beautiful trees. And then the second reason is to help minimize the impact to some of these existing yards where sidewalk has never been located before. And then a similar thing happens up on the eastern end, where eastern end, not Easter, we're adjusting the sidewalks to go around trees again. The intent would be in the future, when these large trees have potentially lived their full life, the sidewalk could be reinstalled straight if we chose. But this provides the benefits without the negative impacts. So partly because of the need for modifications, we did this particular bid on a cost plus. So we invited bidders to provide us a cost, also a timeframe, and then be able to demonstrate their experience. This particular project was originally a grant project. The total project was expected to be around three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And because of the amount of time it takes to follow the federal grant process for property acquisition right-of-way and the purchase price associated with that, it was recommended to us by the UDOT Group that the delay in the time and the cost of the property acquisition would exceed the value of the grant and potentially end up costing the city more money than if we just built the sidewalk ourselves. So what we've done are come up with some ways to make the pricing competitive. As you can see, we were successful. Our low bidder is in for two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The budget for this project, which was the city's portion or match of the grant, was two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. This bid does not include the landscape restoration. We'll be working with the property owners to determine what they like in the new park strips they've never had before, and that work will occur in the spring. Are there any questions about this project? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion here?
I'll make a motion. I move that the City Council award the Center Street Sidewalk Project, Orchard Drive to three forty East to WM Green Incorporated for the bid price of two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's start with Tammy.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
We. Thank you. Next item. Consideration of Resolution 2025-56R, Resolution Approving Agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for Electrical Services Related to Hatch Park Redevelopment.
So this resolution is to approve an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for the Hatch Park Expansion. The fixtures on the left are just kind of a reminder of the massive expansion and redevelopment we're doing for this beautiful park. And the right are just a couple snips out of the plans showing the lighting plan, the electrical lines, and the work that's being done by the electrical engineer and the design group. So the agreement with Rocky Mountain Power accomplishes a couple of different things. One, we are moving the power poles that run along Main Street, and we're taking those, that power underground, we'll be removing the power poles. We're having new services that are provided to various locations within the park expansion project. And we're also doing some relocation of some existing infrastructure that's located within the city right-of-way. These are just a couple photographs that we took today that kind of show those overhead lines. And then if you look in the bottom, centered there, kind of at the flag location, you can see the large green boxes. This is all existing infrastructure. And while we need power and we want the power to go to all the locations that it needs to be, it's really much more attractive if we can take it underground, and the park design kind of requires those improvements. So I wanted to kind of explain the cost breakdown on this. The city cost is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, two sixty-seven, three ten. The amount, the Rocky Mountain Power is paying directly will be four hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. That's the cost to them for the work their crews are doing. And then the portion of the work is being covered under our franchise agreement. We've worked out some deals with them. Rather, they would have to relocate the power poles that are located within the right-of-way for some work we're doing. We're moving some curb. And that work is done under a franchise agreement at no cost to the city. So we requested that they give us a credit for what they would have to pay to move the power poles towards taking the power underground, and they were, they were in agreement. So some of the credit that's being provided or the cost being paid is that power pole relocation that doesn't need to be done. And then we're just paying the cost difference for that portion of the work. So we consider that to be a really big benefit to the city. So this work's already covered in the Hatch Park Budget, but the agreement cost is for two sixty-seven, three ten.
Karen, by they, do you mean Rocky Mountain? Are they the franchise?
Yes.
Oh, okay. This is a good project. I do note that in the contract, you've got the requested date of service of eleven thirteen twenty twenty-three.
I will correct, I'll have that corrected. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on this? Well, we're kind of been going in order here, so Ted, did you want to?
Sure. I move that the City Council approve 2025-56R, a resolution approving an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for electrical services related to the Hatch Park redevelopment.
I'll second.
Thank you. And let's start with Ted.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is consideration of Resolution 2025-55R, a resolution appointing the city trustee to the South Davis Sewer District Board of Trustees. Ken?
Thanks, Mayor. As, as I shared with you in your council materials, the current city representative that the city council previously approved as the, as the representative of North Salt Lake to the Board of Trustees was Mayor Horrocks. And prior to that, it was Mayor Arvey. And so it's, it's always been the mayor. There are some mayors serving on the board now from other communities. You might remember that this is a district that contains five cities and some county area, the same cities that we participate in in the fire district, so the five southern cities. Mayor Horrocks' term expires at the end of this year. And so as you could see from the materials, the district reached out to us and gave us some options for appointing a representative. I wrote this resolution as if we were renewing, you could consider it a renewal of Mayor Horrocks' term. You can also select a council member from the group, and you can do those two appointments without public notice or a public hearing. If you determined to pick someone in the community, you'd need to go through a public notice and a public hearing process. And I haven't, no one has said to me that you want to do someone else other than, well, no one's said anything to me. So anyway, we've written this, I've written this resolution to reappoint Mayor Horrocks, and we'll turn that discussion back to the council.
Mayor, I think during the summit we had up at the, I guess we call it the summit, the brainstorming, I'd mentioned that I thought sometimes the appointing to these boards and districts, that it, it's heavy with mayors, and it's not personal at all. But I think sometimes to have people that are on the council or even in the community is a good idea. And the reason why is that we are building a bench. And there are people that have experience beyond us who could be in the community, who may know more about sewer. We've had trouble with the biodigester. We've had some real issues that doesn't seem to be getting traction. Not, again, just because of you, it's a hard problem, right? But you might consider delaying the appointment and thinking, looking in the community to see if you have somebody who's truly a sewer expert.
We've ta, so we've taken some steps to try to correct this. The biggest step is we've sold WRR to expert, kind of company that knows how to run it. We've budgeted two million dollars to address some of these issues that we think we can It's not, it's not unprecedented to have a city council mayor, one member currently is a city council member, the rest are mayors, except the two at-large people that actually run for the position. And one of those is Len Arvey. The city council member did not get reelected in the last election, so they got an open seat there, yeah. But other than that, it's traditionally the, it is traditionally the mayor's.
Yeah, so I guess that's the question, in terms of discussion. Do you want it, right? How badly do you want it? And then secondly, do we think that maybe it would be a good idea to shake it up a little bit? That's all.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm open to, you know, the mosquito abatement board. I'm the only mayor on the mosquito abatement board. When I was elected mayor, they all just said, oh, so you're going to quit on us now like all the other mayors do? And so I said, well, no, I'll stay, you know? But I, I don't feel strongly about that, especially with Gary Hatch retiring, though we'll have to select someone new. I was happy to give up the South Davis Rex Center, because it was driving me crazy, and I'm sorry, Suzanne, that I, yeah. But part of my approach in my first term was, let me jump in and see what these things are going on. And we've solved some problems at the, at the sewer plant. But I guess it'd be my desire to continue there, but I, I will, if it's the council's decision, I'll certainly step aside.
I really like Lisa's suggestion along the lines of broadening our bench. I think that's a really worthy goal in the city in general. But I also feel like if you're interested, and it's something you've enjoyed doing, I have no direct interest in shaking it up in this, for this assignment, but thinking of your assignments at large, if there are some in your capacity that you are ready to give up, I would encourage you to do that. But if this is what you want, great. And I, I did have a question along these lines about the OX Eon Energy Open House on Friday. I, I guess that is a partnership that's happening currently at this location where they're taking, they're capturing methane gas and they're creating fuel out of it, which is a really fantastic use of a bio product. Do you know at this point if there's any discussion to expand this plant as a result of that? That might not be in the discussion at this point?
I don't, I don't think so. One, and I mentioned this a few meetings ago, but one of the things that we're seriously looking at, as we're, you know, we're doing this eighty-five million dollar expansion at the north plant, is actually potentially closing the south plant and just pumping, you know, rather than recreating this. There's a lot going on in these things, and, and the learning curve is quite steep, and I'm still learning.
I was going to say that. I appreciate you being there. And if you're willing to continue, I would say, keep going. Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, my, my comment would be similar in, in just the fact that, as much as we all know that we just love meetings for the sake of more meetings in life, you know, every, every one of these organizations that we go on, it's another, you know, monthly meeting. The Rex Center goes from five-thirty generally until nine-thirty, sometimes ten. They're not short, and it's every month. And it's unpaid. And so, you know, it's just a little more earning our wings in heaven, I guess, but I appreciate that you're willing to do a lot of these. I think probably you'd happily give some up if anyone else wants another meeting in their life, but I appreciate that you're, you're doing all of these other organizations. It's a lot.
I'm just going to weigh in again. If you want it, that's great. But do, I do think with these really highly technical boards that we're on, we have not solved that biodigester problem. And I think that it'd be a good idea to go to the community, almost as though you were setting out an RFP, who out here understands this damn problem and can get it taken care of? Understand? That's where I'm coming from.
And I think we've, I, I'm hoping we've hired and partnered with the right people that can do it, but the time will tell.
Do you know what kind of time? What's, what's the ETA on change?
The close, we closed on it just a couple of months ago, and, and they've committed to throwing a lot of money at this, too.
Because it is significant. The smell is significant.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
I'll still vote for you, Mayor, but I just want to let you know, that's what I thought.
I move that the City Council approve Resolution 2025-55R, a resolution appointing Brian J. Horrocks as the city's representative to the Board of Trustees of the South Davis Sewer District.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's start with Tammy.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and I will report at the next meeting that I've been reappointed with a lot of grumbling about that.
No.
About results. We need results here, people.
Yeah, that's fair. Remember that.
Next is the quarterly finance report period for September thirtieth. Heidi?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this presentation is meant to complement the larger financial report that's in your packet. You'll see that we have columns for each of the three months in the fiscal year that's just began on July one. So there's a column for July, August, and September. We're experimenting with presenting this data differently so that the council can see some comparative information and ask maybe questions about what it is that we're reporting on every month. Along with that, you'll see the prior year-to-date information, along with current year-to-date budget, the typical items that we would always have in these reports. It's just providing that monthly comparison that's new, as well as at the end of each fund, I'm providing just a brief snapshot of an estimate of where we are at, what the current impact to fund balance would be for year-to-date, as well as what we are projecting with the current budget. So to start, here is a comparison of the general fund snapshot for the first three months of the fiscal year. So this would be July one through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and this current fiscal year, which is twenty twenty-six. So you can see revenues and expenditures are tracking very, very closely with what we would expect in the general fund. Twenty-five percent of the year has elapsed. Expenses are twenty-five percent spent. Revenues are at seven point eight percent collected, but that's typical for this time of year because we're behind two months in collecting sales tax. So I just received tonight, sales tax revenues for September, so we'll be posting those in the month of November. To take a closer look at that, you can really see by item, things are really tracking closely with last year, with the exception of franchise taxes. And this is simply due to the September receipt of power franchise taxes was for June, so it got booked back to the prior fiscal year. So we'll see that true up again. So it's a timing issue that we're seeing there. So current general fund revenues are at one point two-nine-one million compared to one point three-nine-two last fiscal year. Total budget is sixteen million, five hundred and fifty thousand, three twenty-five. You'll see that in the revenues, I've got that line item for the use of fund balance. So we are anticipating to spend down one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars in fund balance. If you'll recall, one, a million, five hundred thousand of that is for Hatch Park. So that's a planned spend down and was assigned last fiscal year, so that amount rolls to this new fiscal year. So of- So of that amount of the use of fund balance, balance at this time, it looks like only about 33,000 would be going towards operating costs. But also keep in mind, we are just about to present our annual financial report in the next few weeks. So I do have some pretty good numbers for how fiscal year 2025 closed out. And we have added to fund balance by 775,000 dollars. So I don't anticipate that we will actually recognize a spend down or dip into fund balance unless we fund additional projects without a revenue stream throughout the year. Of that 750, I think it's closer to 775 that I'm seeing. It's a mix between revenues coming in higher than projected because we've projected sales taxes very conservatively over the last couple of years, as well as underspending in some departments because we always have a little bit of budget that's churned back. In expenditures, again, tracking really close with last year and at 25% spent, we're, or through the year, we're 25% spent. So we're really tracking right along where we would hope to. The only variance I saw was in the police budget and that was due to a one-time purchase of some radios in the first quarter of last fiscal year. So we made a big equipment purchase in the same time period, which we didn't do this year. So to take a different look at what this does to fund balance, you can see that we are spending down that red line that's net change for periods. So in July, we spent down fund balance by 1.55 million. In August, it was 778,000 and then 497,000 in September. This is standard for general fund budgets. The bulk of our, or a good portion of our funding will come in in December for property taxes. In fact, some entities have to take out tax anticipation notes to bridge the gap. But luckily, we have a very strong and healthy fund balance. You can see we have even at the end of September, 2.6 million. And we are expecting to be relatively flat, neither gaining or dipping into fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Heidi, on the previous slide, is general government, is that salary?
General government is going to be everything from admin budget. So the city manager's budget, finance, the governing council. I'm trying to think of what else goes in there.
It was just a $50,000 difference, uh, projected. And so I was just wondering why we were projecting a larger expenditure next year on general government?
I don't know that we had any significantly larger expenses that we funded in general government. But we are 50,000 ahead for the year, this current fiscal year, but I can look into that and find out exactly what line item that is. That one didn't stand out to me specifically as being any one thing. Just all of the budgets are a little bit ahead in that area. But if I do notice something, I will reach out and, and let the council know on why that's tracking so far ahead. All right. So somebody asked me today if I really look at all of these numbers. And I was hoping they'd still be here when I got to present this sheet that has all of these numbers on it. I'm gonna have to look at my printed copy because unfortunately, I can't read that. This is a new part of our annual financial report that you will be seeing in a few weeks. And I kind of, this is a really great report and I don't want you, when you see it, to get intimidated by it because there's a lot of great information in there. So what we are doing is a lot of entities or cities our size have a whole separate section of their annual financial report that's called the statistical section. And essentially, it takes the data that's in those reports in the front and compiles them in a 10-year comparison, which is exactly what this is. So you're seeing where I'm proposing 2025 and again, I'm still waiting to hear back from the auditors, but this is what I've submitted to them for 2025. But you can track along the trend line there and get a good idea for how we are tracking year over year. And some things instantly stand out when you look at this. When I first looked at it, the very first line, I thought, how are we spending more in general government in 2016 than in 2025? Again, a general government question. And note, for the purposes of this report, general government encompasses more items. But I looked into this and pulled the financial reports back from 2016 and we had an investment in, there's landslide mitigation that had to be done. It was $940,000, so one, a one-time spend. So you can go ahead and take a look through these different line items and watch what you would expect to trend. And then look out for any anomalies like the one that I pointed out. There are a handful here and there. I did not point them all out and, and, um, point to them, but you can see that overall, our primary government expenses over the last 10 years, this is total for our government expenses and our business-type expenses, have grown from 17,700, I should probably read off my sheets where I can read that number. 17,793,89. And in 2025, it was 32,179,970. And you can see it's not really any one thing. It's multiple areas just growing over time. In comparison, this shows program revenues broken out by government activities as business-type activities. The interesting thing about this data is businesses are run off of program revenues. Program revenues are gonna be your charges for services, so your utility fees, your golf fees. There's no tax revenues that are flowing through on this sheet. And the whole idea is to show you that bottom line. You can see there's the amount for government activities and the amount for business-type activities. You can see how dependent the government is on tax revenues. See how it's negative? Like in fiscal year 2025, it's negative 15,557,741. That shows kind of what the tax need is to support general government operations. Where on the other side, business type activities is to the positive of 6 million. So again, really helpful information. We present this every year, just, and this is just one single report. There's 18 of these schedules. I'm working on putting them all together with the 10-year look back. I don't know that I'll have them all together, but they all have something really useful when you, when used in conjunction with this look back. And so finally, this is the last page. It gives you the bottom line change in net position. So this is going to be, how did we do at the end of the year? Did we use resources or do we add to our resources? Resources and net position for businesses could be assets. So keep in mind, that's not always cash for the business funds. So for example, 6.4 million in 2025 for business-type activities is not going to be all cash that we took in the water fund and didn't spend. A lot of that's reinvestment in capital, acquisition, projects, things like that. The one thing I wanted to point out on this page is that we often get asked the question, does the city pay for golf course funding? Does the city fund the golf course in any way? Does the general government contribute to business-type activities in any way? And you can see these transfer line items that I've highlighted here. So 2017 would have been the last year that the government operations loaned money. That is a loan on the books. But it really clearly stands out how those funds are, are allocated and, and shows that really clearly. Some of the other schedules that will be included are, when I'm working it on, is debt per capita, debt per personal income. So they're, they're really informative and they do track again over 10 years. So I just wanted to not throw these reports at you without explaining how some of them work and what can be gleaned from them.
So Heidi, what do those numbers then mean about the golf course? You were talking about the golf course and then?
Yes. So you can see those transfers out in 2016 and 2017. So those were transfers from the Capital Improvement Fund to the golf course. And so we were often getting asked, are we subsidizing the golf?
We did back then, but we aren't anymore.
We are not. You can see those lines are zero from 2018 forward.
But if you go back one slide, this was an amazing number, if you can. The golf course in 2016 was 1.1, business type. Look where we are, 4.4 million, 71,000. In 10 years' time, we're making 4 million.
And have they paid back that million dollars or is that still an outstanding loan?
It's still an outstanding loan. Right now, they've been cash flow positive for a couple of years, but not to a huge extent. And so we don't want to make it so that they have an operating deficit for a single year. But we are at a point of working with, I think, the golf pro or the director of golf on, on looking at a repayment schedule.
And what, what fund would that go back into?
It would go back into the Capital Projects Fund.
Oh, okay.
So when we talk about the city's kind of unassigned or unspoken-for monies, we have the unassigned fund balance in general fund. And we have the unassigned fund balance in our Capital Projects Fund. And our general fund operates more like your checking account would. We run our day-to-day financial tractions through there, transactions through there, where the Capital Projects Fund, where those monies are sitting is more like a savings account. There is one bank account, but the amount that goes into each of these funds is allocated through the budget process and through the financial process. So those monies are kind of set, those are more rainy day funds. So those would be ones that we wouldn't want to be pulling in and out all of the time to fund operations. Whereas your general fund will fluctuate like that, where some years you might use $100,000 and spend it down, but the next year you might contribute 300,000. And it's really due to the timing of expenditures because we end our fiscal year at a really busy time for us in June, so.
I, I think you were asking, is the golf fund, it's in an enterprise fund? The golf fund is a separate fund from the general. It's an enterprise fund because it's like a business fund.
And so the golf course profit goes into general, but the, if the loan repayment would go back into capital projects?
So the golf course profit, it all stays as its own into its own fund? And it has a very small balance right now, which is, I think we don't want to go and deplete it entirely. But it would be paying back the Capital Projects Fund because it's like we took money from our savings to loan it to them and that's who would get paid back.
Right.
But at any time that we needed to, we could pull money from the Capital Projects Fund into the general fund. And you'll see maybe some of the entities that are going through truth and taxation are either spending down their fund balance or their capital projects balance to handle some of their operating expenditures. And that's really when you start worrying about your tax rates and going out for truth and taxation. We are not in that situation. Unless the city took on a new project or a new program, that would be the point where I think that the city would need to consider a tax increase. But at that point, the message to the public would be, we want to do X with it. This is, you're going to get new services, but right now, we are able to fund our existing services with the growth that we've had, so.
And we have that lever kind of in our back pocket. Before we would ever look at a tax increase, we do have a, a million-dollar outstanding loan to our golf enterprise and probably a few other places.
The loan itself is 2.9 million. So this schedule is picking up just the last two years of contributions. So that's over several, several, several years. So when we get our audited financial statements and do that annual presentation with the auditors, let's set aside some time to talk about that loan and that loan repayment and take a look at how the golf course is doing with its new operations and, and maybe see what ideas the council has.
I'd like to see a, a plan put in place, even if it's small, not to stretch or to, um, hurt their rainy day. But it's been long enough now. I would hate to see that loan not at least start a repayment program more than a decade from the time that it was taken out, so.
One of the observations here too should be, so the golf course is doing really well now. But they've also been reinvesting in some new, well, this will do great if we, if we do this. And I think we're running out of ideas at this point to reinvest in it. I doubt that. Tyler's pretty creative.
All right. Were there any questions on the presentation or on the financial report?
This is really exciting information and it is nice to have a longitudinal look at where our money's going. It was great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Heidi. Next item is the semi-annual finance department report.
So this will be strange because I'm not presenting on numbers, but instead I'm presenting on my department, which is great because I've got a great team. And I think any one of us here who works, especially in the admin building, I think we all kind of brag about how great our teams are. I know, I know. But I'm gonna brag on my team a little bit, so. Here is the semi-annual financial report, finance report, but very few numbers, so you guys will be really happy. I've got fun numbers to present that aren't in the millions so much. I do need to find a new picture from our contest maybe to put in the background of my next presentation, so. I'll have to see what works. Okay, here we are. We all wore pink. We had lunch at the Plated Dreams because we have someone in our team who loves pink and it makes her so happy. But besides loving pink, we do have department values. So we very much focus on providing timely service to all of our customers, stakeholders. We're unique in that a lot of our customers are other departments. If we don't do our job, they can't do their jobs. And so it's not just serving the public at the counter, which is a huge part of customer service, but I always have to make sure everyone's aware that, that we can't be belt-bottlenecking others' work. Obviously, we're stewards of public funds and take that very, very seriously, whether it's the accounts payable position or the payroll position, particularly the treasurer's position. But we all have a stake in making sure that the city stays financially solvent and that there is no waste or abuse. Compliance, there's a lot of compliance part of what we do. Most of the compliance falls to me, but I've been spreading that out amongst the team and it's been really fun to see them grow and understand some of the financial reporting and some of the statutory requirements of, that cities are required to report and where that gets posted. And then last, I think we all on our team have this quality. It's maybe not a value so much, but we're all very proactive. And I think as soon as we notice a problem, someone in our department will jump on it and we work together to find solutions, so. First of all, our city treasurer is a superstar. So this position is statutorily appointed by the mayor. The primary functions are outlined in state statute under Title 11. So if you've ever seen Stacy Steckler at the front, I'm, I'm sure most of you have. I'm guessing everybody has, but I put her picture in here to embarrass her. So I know she's not watching, but I'll have to tell her I did that. So she oversees cash handling and receipting, collections on past due accounts, dispersment of public funds, monitoring of the city's cash, cash position, coordinating with myself, the finance director, on investing cities' idle funds. She manages all the business licensing and she's taken over parking citations. She is just super well-rounded and just a superstar. You might think that the finance director would disperse public funds, but that's kind of a conflict of interest. I really don't have any authority to spend or, in my role, it's uniquely separate. And so all of that kind of has to happen outside so that I can provide the oversight of those that do it. So, so if things seem a little bit weird, feel free to ask questions. Or if you thought, I thought you did that, Heidi, and I didn't know you had a person who did that, please tell me. And I can explain the reason why. So by the numbers for Stacy, she has managed 28,540,000 in cash balances. That was the cash, our cash balances that wasn't part of our debt service construction funds at June 30th. She issued 810 business licenses, issued 176 parking citations. We collected on 146 of them, 25 were sent to collections. This is, believe it or not, a very high collection rate for us. We were hovering around 20% before we, she came in and took over the process, changed the process. She has worked at North Salt Lake for 17 and a half years. And she attends 30-plus hours a year of training through the Treasurers Conference and Treasurers Academy and business licensing conferences. So she is just a critical part of our team. There's so much more that she does, as with all of these folks. So it's kind of hard to put it all in one spot, but yeah, she is fantastic. Sue is our payroll clerk. She is, you can see we have 4.33 FTEs on our department and Sue works about 40. on our department, and Sue works about thirty-seven and a half hours a week because she just loves that couple hours to herself. She oversees all of our timekeeping and bi-weekly payroll processing. She onboards and does all of our new hire paperwork. She knows everything about all of our benefits. So she's our benefits administrator. She does all of our payroll reporting, both federal and state, for quarterly and annually. She manages our FMLA program, workers' comp claims administration. She does a lot with compliance reporting now for Utah Retirement Systems and the Affordable Care Act. She is fantastic with assisting employees when they have anything as simple as an address change to a divorce or a new baby and walking them through those things. She is everybody's friend, and she's just so sweet. And then, of course, she's got tons of records. I can't think of any more protected records than employee records. And so she manages all those for all the employees for, I think the retention is, the least restrictive retention is something like fifty years after death. It's something, we just decided we keep everything forever if it's, if it's required for employees. By the numbers, she actually, believe it or not, onboards a ton of employees every year because of, we have so many seasonals. So she onboarded one hundred and sixty-five employees for the year. By fall, she terminated eighty-seven. These would just be seasonals. She had four FMLA cases. We had two hundred and eighty-five W-2, so that's how many unique employees we had throughout the year at some time or another. That's including our committees and boards as well. And she's worked at the city for six and a half years. This is April, our utility billing clerk, and she manages all of our customer accounts and setup administration. She does all the monthly utility billing processing. She does meter read. She looks at the meter reads every month, looks for usage problems, leaks, documents all of our utility reporting, manages shut-offs and makes payment arrangements with folks so that we don't have to shut them off. She's utility customer service and support for anybody who wants to know anything about their water or garbage bill, and she's our bilingual customer support across the entire admin building, and is just a ray of light. So I went back and looked at how many accounts, so this would be essentially people moving in and out of either rentals or homes here in the city. So she set up three hundred and nineteen new accounts last year. We average about sixty-five hundred utility bills processed every month. I can't even measure how many phone calls she takes. She's always on the phone, and she's worked here for three and a half years. Am I telling you all things you already know about the team? Okay. This is Alicia. She is our most part-time employee. She works about sixteen hours a week, and she makes it possible for us to separate accounts payable from all of our other accounting functions so that we have an independent person over that function. So she processes weekly check runs. She manages the P cards, the purchase cards. She sets up new vendors. When we purchase new property, she immediately adds it to, make sure that we have it insured. She looks at every single purchase order and makes sure that all of the proper signatures are on there. So departments create their own purchase orders, but they have to get certain sign authority at different dollar thresholds per our purchasing agreement. She does our ten ninety-nine reporting, unclaimed property reporting, and travel reimbursements. She gets a lot done in sixteen hours a week. So she processed thirty-five hundred payments in twenty-twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. We had twenty-seven ten ninety-nines, and she has been at North Salt Lake for twelve years. So you can see we have a seasoned, and everybody that, when I came in, except for April, April and I started a week apart, but they have been with the city for a very long time and know a lot about the city and care a lot about the city. And I'm not sure if you all know what I do, because everybody, like, they do all that other stuff, so what stuff does Heidi do?
Where's your picture?
I'm here. I knew that question was going to come. You don't need a picture. So obviously, I oversee the finance team. I'm always working on their training and development. I've worked in the field for a very long time for many local governments, so I'm always trying to help bring them up to a new way of thinking about different things, and it's really fun and I love it. I prepare the budget and manage budget amendments. I manage the external audit process and audit committee coordination, which we have a great audit committee, and they requires no, no real work at all. I work with the year-end schedules, journal entries, act for preparation, so like that report that was, I showed you earlier, I prepare all of those. So I think really it's just the very technical stuff to make sure that we're compliant with GAAP and GASP and all of the accounting acronyms that there are. Bank reconciliations, because everybody else has something to do with receipting or moving money. I'm the one who makes sure and oversees all of that and reconciles that to make sure there was no funny business. Work with capital assets and adding and disposing those, both our equipment and our infrastructure, manage our debt service, obviously the compliance reporting, and then I work really hard on internal controls and policy development and trying to get all of the right assignments to the right people. And I don't have great numbers. I do reconcile a lot of bank accounts. We have about, we have twenty-one between all of the different debt service accounts that we have, because some of them have construction funds and some of them have funds sitting, waiting to pay escrow. And the golf course itself has about five different point-of-sale systems that hold cash, and I know the audit committee, we've talked about that. Budgetary oversight, so if you look at the back of this report, it does total to ninety-seven million. We do not spend ninety-seven million a year, do not be, I just do not want the numbers to conflict. A lot of that is going to be money coming in and out of the funds. It does, unfortunately, our budget reports do not offset for inter-fund activity, so that's very much inflated, but I didn't want to present something that didn't coordinate with our report. Yeah, and I've been at North Salt Lake for three and a half years, and I have a CGFM, so I'm required to do forty-plus hours a year of continuing education. And our auditors are actually now checking for everything on our fraud risk assessment, each one of those things that we've signed off on. So they actually came in and checked all my education certificates and hours this year, which is great because we've got new auditors, and they have been fantastic. In fact, one thing I can report about our new auditors, in the agreement with them, we requested that the audit work complete by November fifteenth. So we're just about wrapped up, but because we're so far ahead of schedule, that's what's allowing me to prepare all those additional schedules and do that look back. It's a lot of work to go pull ten years of reports and compile it and all of that, but I've had the time to do that, and it's something I've wanted to do for a long time to include those in the reports. So there are a huge reason why I'm able to do that, because they're not still asking me questions and asking me to provide documentation. We're done with all of that. So some of our initiatives. Let's, let's make this go fast. So things that were implemented in the last fiscal year, we have a new business licensing portal and a new parking citation process. It's using a whole new online platform. Stacy set both of those up. She's managing them like a champ. The one thing about the business licensing portal is we're no longer mailing paper licenses to people and taking paper applications and having people come in. And she, she launched it Sunday night, and of the eight hundred and ten, she already had a hundred and fifty people renew, which is crazy because she normally has a very difficult time getting people, especially because it always happens around the holidays, to complete by January first. We, of course, have the new external auditors. We set up a sweep account. To explain what that is, that's just something that helps us earn additional interest. So Stacy and I are always looking at ways to earn more interest without having to invest in CDs or outside tools. So the things that we've done are small, but they've worked and they've kept our interest earnings pretty high. We keep very little in our operating account, only enough to cover our bills with a cushion, and then the rest sits in PTIF because PTIF has been earning so much money. But then we've even set up the sweep account because sometimes we will send out a million dollars worth of payments, and if nobody cashes those checks for a year, or a year, a week or two, we want to be able to get interest on it a little bit longer, so. All of that little stuff adds up. We've automated our annual ethical pledge document, so this is just something that we have employees file every year. It's always very difficult to get people to sign this, only because it's hard to track down all the employees. So we've just made that something that when they come in for open enrollment, they either have to elect or not elect, but they can't even get in until they've signed the form. So we're going to work with more of our compliance and training, things like that, to kind of make it the barrier to enroll for your benefits or to switch over the new year to make it a little bit easier and timely. And we're still working on the tower read system. I think we, first, this is for the water department and the water system. We ran our first tower read import in June. It didn't go great. We switched back to the truck reads in July. We went back to the tower reads in August. There's a lot of cleanup to do, but we're working really, really hard at it. I know everybody is eager to see that online portal where residents can go and look at their reads, but we want the data to be accurate. And right now, we're still having to bring it out, bring it back in, re-import it in and out to get good data. I'm hopeful, this is our last billing cycle that we ran on Monday, yesterday, that had irrigation on it, so I'm hopeful that we'll start going to be able to clean up some of the accounts. But other than that, it's, it's going well. It's going well. It's just, there's a lot, it's very, very technical, and there is a lot to ensure on every account, on every meter, on every radio, on every meter, and then how it correlates to the information that's imported in. So we're, we're getting there. So for next year's initiatives, we are going to be continuing to work on that. I know the question was asked, when will we launch it live to the public? That's a good question. I think it needs more discussion. I think we're still about half of our meters that need to be replaced, John? Less than half? Six. I just saw a new invoice for meters, so they are continually working on replacing those and moving them out. And that's another reason why we are having such a difficult time with the data or having to do so much work with the data, because every time we install new meters, the first time the read comes in, we have to make sure it's good. So if we get three hundred new meters installed that month when we import the readings, we probably have three hundred accounts to review independently of our process. But I think as we continue this install process, it will get better and better, and we can work on a timeline on when we're ready to launch that. One thing I think we'll be able to do this next year with interest rates coming down is to refinance the Hatch Park debt. It was something we planned on doing when we first took out the debt, and so we will be watching out for that opportunity. I would anticipate in the next twelve to eighteen months, we should be able to do that. We really desperately need to update the finance department website. That's a picture of it up in that top left with the clip art of finance in the hands. It's a little outdated. Again, those additional act for reporting schedules. There is another report called a popular annual financial report, which essentially takes that large bound document and puts it into ten or twelve pages with graphs. It's a citizen-centric reporting. I have a link here. If you click on that link, oddly enough, it will go to Riverton's Paffer. That's how you pronounce that, the Paffer, because I also, for some reason, found Riverton as a good example today. But down the road, I think that would be a very, very good document for us to have, just to take some of this data and make it a little bit more digestible. New investment strategies. So one of the things with interest rates dropping is we're not going to be earning the same revenues we were in interest from PTIF. So there are ways that we could invest some of our idle funds, funds that we're not going to need, still leaving enough to have a cushion and put some laddered CDs in and still get maybe a four to five percent interest rate once we drop below a certain level. So we're looking at the potential of what that would look like. That would be new for the city entirely. And then always policy work. We've done the cash handling. Probably need to talk about investment strategy in our fund balance reserves. We talked a little bit about the general fund balance, what we had left over at the end of the fiscal year. We kind of showed that trend. The first three months, we're spending down for a little bit, so, you know, we're only required to have five percent of a year's revenue in there, which would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which wouldn't even have gotten us through July spending. So, but those would be things that we should consider. And that's it. So very few numbers. Were there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. That was, you're amazing.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, next item is approval of some minutes. We've got the joint session of October fourteenth. Is there any corrections to those?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that the city council approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five joint meeting as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have the city council minutes of October twenty-first.
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the minutes of the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting as written.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I didn't vote on that one. I wasn't there.
I accidentally voted, so. Those keep in score. That's my fifth mistake of the night. Discussion of action items.
I have a couple. First of all, thank you for the action items. I really appreciate this. On action item twenty-five, twenty-seven, which is a new one that was added for me, let's see, I'm off order here. It is the citizen orientation or like citizen training. I love the idea of the one or two-day camp, but I would love to know, like, staff opinions or city council opinions. I'm not sure we will attract sufficient citizens who are willing to sign up for that, and I wonder if our first round might be like a two-hour orientation at the city, or if we pursue the taking city council to the different areas in the city and holding a city council meeting there. It could be in conjunction with that night where we, I don't know, do it an hour before or something, but I'm just, I think that that's going to take a lot of work to put that together. I think it's a valuable resource, but I'm not sure we're going to fill it up with citizens straight away. So I would love staff to maybe reconsider if they think one or two days is something we could do, or if it should be smaller, and then any city council that wants to weigh in on that. I don't know, make an agenda item or if anyone has anything they want to add?
I think we'll adjust the action item to give you some options. I agree that it's, I think it's difficult to create a pretty intense program just right off the bat. So I think we could do some regular things, though, on a regular basis for citizens to take advantage of. Maybe one quarter it's, it's public safety, another quarter it's public works, another quarter it's general government, and we could, if members of the public want to take advantage of some smaller classes, classes, maybe a couple hours on a weeknight would be great.
And I think this resource speaks to also what you had said earlier about building a bigger bench available of people in the city that are prepared to dive in. I also would recommend thinking about offering this to the youth city council, and so they go and also get to see those different departments and learn all that behind the scenes about the city. Okay, the next one is twenty-five oh eight, and I think that's an important agenda item, and that's another one that I feel like maybe could be streamlined a little. I don't know, I'm just a little worried about how big and messy that would be, especially building up a working group with members of the public, although I do think receiving public feedback about that is really important. Sorry, it is project to evaluate readdressing all county addresses to city addresses. And the task list says city staff is working to assemble a database. Great. Let's see. City staff will propose to the council a working group of members of the public, staff and council representation to review the entire scope of the project. I just think that might be able to be fine-tuned as well and trimmed down a little bit.
And we're getting people in that area saying it's time. Anything else on action items? We do not need a closed session, so. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned. Need a ride home? You need a ride home? You need a ride home?